Good morning. I call this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council back to order. We have a number of important topics to address today. As always, we will be addressing them with the purpose of serving our community through our mission statement, which is connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. On this Sunday morning, thank you to my colleagues, our dedicated staff, and those viewing this meeting remotely. Michelle Stiegel, Planning Director, will cover our first topic. Ms. Stiegel.
Thank you, Mayor. Give me just a minute here. I'm trying to get control of the screen and then can get started.
Of course. While she's doing that with the agreement of the council, there's been a couple of times during discussions when staff actually puts a comment in, and generally, we want to hear from staff. So if I see that, I might let staff speak before addressing the next council member. That generally seems to be the way we do things. So, thank you. If we want to change that as we go, just speak up and let me know.
Okay. So, thank you for that, Mayor. Really wanted to kick off this morning session, providing council with an overview of the various UDO updates that the planning staff has been working on. There are a variety of amendments that we completed in 2020, a group that are still in progress, and then we've also been talking about more of a comprehensive update that will occur now that the land use plan is adopted. So just want to touch base on the status of those with you, talk a little bit about how the larger UDO land use plan update is different than what staff is currently working on, and really, the main purpose is to provide some context for the presentations that will follow from Senior Planner West and Planning Manager Chris Lawson. We met with you at retreat last year and talked to you about a number of potential amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO. I mentioned that we had a number of amendments that were in progress that needed to be completed. We had some state mandated UDO changes that needed to be made, and as a reminder, those came in two parts. Part one took effect immediately, and part two had a longer timeframe for implementation. We then also talked to you about a variety of other potential amendments to the code, and you provided us a priority order to start working through those others. So in 2020, we completed the updates to the Main Street Plan Development District. We adopted a number of administrative changes to the code, so that was really part one of the 160D update, and then taking the opportunity while we were in that section to make some other administrative changes as well. We completed the sign code update, and then there were other miscellaneous amendments that were brought in tandem with some of those larger projects or separately to address various specific issues. And you'll see on the slide that we still have another, a number of other updates that are still in process. I want to hit on the 160D update and the access and circulation update first. Both of those are drafted. I would say that they're going through final cleanup and edits, and you'll see those coming through Planning and Zoning Board and Town Council very soon, one tracking right after the other. As a reminder, by state law, that 160D update does have to be completed by July 1st. We're really looking at getting that one to Planning and Zoning Board here in just a couple of weeks in March, and then to you in April, so we should not have an issue meeting that timeframe. With that one, we will be bringing forward a small, select number of other proposed miscellaneous amendments, really being deliberate in what we're choosing as to not bog down that update. But we do currently have the mobile classroom amendment in that draft, so the change of that from a special use permit to a permitted use. One other item with that update that I'd just like to make note of has to do with an early land use plan implementation item. If you look at the land use plan today, that general commercial district is really focused on non-residential uses. The closest classification we have to that in the UDO is the corridor commercial district, which does allow multifamily and townhomes. So we're looking to take that out of our current corridor commercial district, just something we think we could do upfront, quick and easy, that will have a big impact. Once we're through access and circulation, the next in the priority order that you had given us was tree preservation, landscaping, and common open area. Chris Lawson will be talking to you about that update here later this morning. And with that, based on some of the discussions we've heard from you over the last couple of years, some of the discussion we heard at the October retreat, I also want to talk to you about building in parkland dedication versus land dedication as part of that grouping. And then finally, throughout the course of the year, as we've been talking about the land use plan update, we did make a commitment to you to frontload and expedite some changes to two of our subareas, the McCrimmon Extension Area and the TOD, and along with that would come airport overlay amendments. I will tell you that we are doing our best to fast-track that. Staff is really bending over backwards, I would say, to work on those. Drafting has already begun, but even with that, as we're finishing drafting and need to bring that through a formal review process, you are looking at a few months till you get something in place. And Senior Planner West will be talking to you about these more later this morning. But I do want to emphasize one point with these, that there is a saying that the perfect is the enemy of the good. I will ask you to keep that in mind as we bring these updates forward. We really are just looking to get something on the ground quickly to provide some safeguards. We do anticipate that it will be amended and tweaked later. With McCrimmon, we think we'll be pretty good. We'll probably get you about 80% of the way there, if not more. With TOD, we are truly looking at a Band-Aid, and I want to emphasize it. It's a Band-Aid to protect against something truly incompatible from happening while we're working on the larger project. And we are very concerned about these areas. We are more so concerned about the TOD, and I want to be honest and upfront, even with how quickly we are trying to bring these forward, we are worried that we may already be too late and that something incompatible may come in in the meantime. But we are doing our best to work on these and bring something forward to you. Sorry, I lost track here. If you just bear with me for a second. Okay, so that's a lot. So how is the UDO update that we'll be working on now that the land use plan adopted different from that? That land use plan UDO update is really a comprehensive look at the UDO to make sure that the UDO lines up with and implements the vision in the plan. So that takes a look at each and every zoning district, the purpose of the district, the dimensional standards of the district, such as your setbacks, your densities, your building height, other things, making sure that all of those are right-sized, looking at all of your permitted uses, making sure that they line up with the plan, looking at your accessory and temporary use tables, looking to create a new TOD district, and you'll see some other items on that slide. We'll really go through all the design principles, all the information that's in that land use plan, and go through and look to make sure that the UDO is aligned with that plan. Important to that conversation is going to be the discussion of any non-conformities that we might be creating, and I'm not necessarily talking about non-conforming uses, but as you're adjusting other standards in the code, we will inevitably create non-conforming site features and other things that we'll need to address or talk about how council wants to address those. We do anticipate that there will be further revisions to some of the updates that staff is front-loading, if you will, so the access and circulation, the landscaping, the tree preservation, the McCrimmon area, the TOD area. We'll further refine those. And then with the land use plan, there's been a lot of discussion about the fact that we are not going to do a townwide rezoning. However, most of that discussion focused on the residential aspects of the plan. There was some discussion about the commercial areas, but limited. And outside of the subareas, we do have some areas, there aren't a lot, where the commercial designation is different than the zoning that's currently in place. Like I said, there aren't many, but we'll need to have a discussion about what approach you might want to take with those. And then, this larger UDO update is a heavy workload, and we will be working on some of those other targeted updates in the background in the meantime, just because the pace of development here in Morrisville is so fast, we don't think that we could wait till the full update is in place. So we have proposed in your fiscal year 2022 budget that is going to be coming before you, that we hire a consultant to help with this project, and that's something that the department really thinks that we need with the other activities and initiatives that we're working on. We just don't have the capacity to take the larger update on and get it done in a timely manner. So you will be seeing that request come forward. So that really concludes at least my part of the presentation. I would be happy to take questions from council if you have them. I will say we have a lot to dive into with you this morning, so if they're not burning questions, preference would be really to hand things over to Brad and Chris if possible. We've broken out their presentations time-wise, for Brad to have about 10 minutes to present and about 20 minutes for questions, and then Chris has approximately the last hour of this session this morning, and we'll be breaking that up with about a half hour for tree preservation and a half hour for the parkland PIL and land dedication discussion. Those are needy topics, and we do think that you'll need some time to get through those. So I did see one question pop up in the chat box, but I will tell you, my chat box has since grayed out, so if I could have some help navigating that, that would be great.
Michelle, your first question is from Councilmember Robati.
Yeah, actually, my question is kind of a medical question. So you mentioned that you're putting requests in the budget to hire a consultant. Would there be an advantage to just bringing on a new person?
That is...
A new employee?
Yeah, I mean, that is something that we always could consider, talk to management about. This really is a special project, so it's not part of, I would say, the normal day-to-day workload. You know, I always, someone's hinting at giving me more staff, you know, I don't want to necessarily turn that down, but this is, I think, a special project, and also, there's workload issues. There is also benefit to having staff work with a consultant, staff bring, you know, kind of that Morrisville specific knowledge about the issues that we're dealing with here, and you couple that with a consultant that's coming in with fresh eyes and ideas that have been implemented other places in the country, and I think you ultimately end up with a better project by coupling those two.
Okay. All right. Good insight. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender.
Good morning, Michelle, and I am looking forward to the subsequent presentations. I did have a question about one thing you said about the TOD area and having concerns. You said something may come up that is incompatible and you may already be too late. Can you give us examples of that or talk about that a little bit more?
Yeah, and we have, throughout the land use update project, been in communication with property owners in the McCrimmon area in particular. So we have seen some very high-level sketch plans of stuff proposed there. I will tell you, people are looking to move as quick as possible. We have also seen some potential projects in the TOD area, you know, how serious those people are. Hard to say right now. Senior Planner West and I have met with at least one of them, you know, trying to encourage them to line their plan up as close as possible with the TOD in terms of placement of the building, location of parking behind the building, but, you know, what was originally shown to us was a very large single-story building with a lot of parking surrounding it. So we will do our best to work with applicants. We never know what is going to come in or when. We're having those behind-the-scenes discussions, but, you know, property owners and applicants do have rights, and this is something that Attorney Gray and I have started to discuss a little bit internally as well, to see what our options may be, but we think that they're probably limited. But I'll be talking through that with Attorney Gray some more.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that's all the questions I've seen, Michelle.
Okay. Well, then I would just say thank you and looking forward to hearing your discussion on these other topics.
So I guess I'll go ahead and start my presentation. So this is just a follow-up to Michelle's discussion that she just went through about the land use plan implementation. Specifically, this presentation focuses on really bringing back some language to implement the McCrimmon overlay, or McCrimmon Extension Subarea, the TOD Subarea, and even really talk about the possibility of a long-term solution for TOD in the form of a TOD code, a tailor-made code specifically crafted to implement all the elements that we have in the plan regarding TOD. And Plan Director mentioned that the TOD code that staff is working on currently right now would be more of a short-term temporary solution to prevent incompatible development from occurring in the area, but we really see the TOD as a special place and really want to ensure that the code that we implement there is well-vetted and thought through. So just a little reminder of, excuse me, where these locations are. We had a very recent discussion about this in the land use plan, but just wanted to point out those specific locations. Again, this is the McCrimmon Extension Subarea in orange here with this pink circle around it, and then we have what we call TOD East and TOD West. So the area around the intersection of McCrimmon and NC-54. One thing I'll quickly point out is that this area in orange is sort of deceptively large. A lot of this will be sort of sliced off with the new overpass that's going to be built, where you have McCrimmon sort of flying over NC-54. So a lot of this area around the north side of this intersection will be undevelopable. So just something to keep in mind when you're thinking about the quantity of stuff that's going to happen around TOD. And so, Plan Director mentioned earlier that in terms of what staff's working on for McCrimmon, you know, we think staff can get you most of the way there, if not all the way there, with our own in-house made code. We can probably get 80 to 85% there with TOD as well in terms of what staff can write up. Both districts are going to have some good urban design principles, you know, buildings properly addressing the street, parking to the side and rear, you know, certain architectural standards, certain landscaping standards, all those things that really sort of drive and implement that vision described in the land use plan. But most importantly, both overlays we see being applied very quickly. As Plan Director mentioned, we have incoming development interests in these two corridors. We think we can get ahead, and we've worked very closely with the property owners in the McCrimmon Extension area. We have been in contact with property owners in the TOD area, but it's, we have less of a sort of certainty about what's happening in those locations. So we really want to get ahead of anything like a, that could completely disrupt TOD, like one day you could all of a sudden see a mini storage facility or a warehouse, and all of a sudden, you could potentially wreak havoc on the viability of transit in that entire location. So we really want to make sure that we're getting ahead of any future incompatible development there. And just to go into each specific overlay district, so the McCrimmon Overlay District, we had a really good discussion about this in October at our mini-retreat. We all wanted to see a more sort of diverse set of uses. You wanted to see enhanced walkability. You didn't want to see more of the status quo, one-story flex space warehousing-type development, heavy industrial development that was likely to occur in that corridor. Town made a major investment in this area, and you all were looking for a good return on that investment. And so that's what the McCrimmon Overlay is trying to accomplish. So I'll quickly go through the highlights of this overlay. So again, really shifting away from primarily industrial development to more of a variety of uses, so we're talking retail, office, sort of large bio lab space, hotel, recreational uses, even perhaps some park uses. We're looking at this area as mostly horizontal mixed-use. There was some discussion about whether or not we should go vertical mixed-use or not. I think where we landed in October was that horizontal mixed-use was sort of the more likely scenario, although we very much encourage vertical mixed-use where possible. We are not, we mentioned this at a couple of meetings ago with council, we are not requiring or plan to require structured parking for this area. We know a lot of the property owners have concerns about this. May make sense more for TOD, might make sense more for Town Center, where we're getting really sort of more nuanced urban design and urban feel. This is more still suburban orientation, just with more walkability, and structured parking might necessarily, not necessarily work there, economically at least. We're looking at permitting multifamily residential, as we discussed many times before. We do envision things like sound attenuation, spacing requirements, things to sort of spread out the multifamily along the corridor. We know there was a lot of concerns expressed at the October mini-retreat of not wanting all of this multifamily to sort of just hug the corridor. We really asked to do, to come up with something to sort of break that out. So that's what we're looking at right now. We're looking at actually some type of spacing requirement right now. We don't have the exact number of feet we're going to implement, maybe somewhere around 500 or so is what we're looking at now, but that could certainly change when we come back to you with an actual overlay district. And what that does is that it physically separates multifamily projects. And so if you have a multifamily project along the road, and you have a 500-foot separation from any other multifamily project along the road, you will have a nice, full-city block of gap between those two projects that can be filled with some other type of use, office, lodging, retail, whatever. So we really envisioned breaking this up to match the vision, to match the concept that we saw in the land use plan. Again, with the pedestrian, Plan Director mentioned this earlier, we're really trying to enhance the pedestrian-friendly design. We want buildings to properly address the street. We're interested in the public realm. You'll notice from the picture above that I had earlier, you know, this is, we're trying to create inviting pedestrian spaces, patios, large sidewalks, good landscaping. You know, the buffers are a tricky thing because we want to have lush landscape buffers, but we don't want to have, buffer them out of existence. We don't want to hide these buildings. We want to present them to the streets so that people actually want to walk to them. One building like this, probably not going to make much of a difference in terms of walkability, but when you get 10, 15, 20, 30 buildings like this, you get a walkable district. And so that's what we're trying to accomplish along this corridor. One thing that Planning Manager Chris Lawson will be discussing with you later is open space dedication. I won't get into a lot of that right now, but I know at the mini-retreat in October, you all were interested in perhaps seeing some dedicated open space here. In fact, we had a concept in our rendering for our suburb, McCrimmon Subarea, where we showed how a dedicated park open space could be sort of inserted right in the middle of the development and how the development could be sort of shaped by that. So that's certainly a possibility, not something I'd recommend using townwide because you want that flexibility of payment and lieu, but here in the TOD also, maybe even Town Center, those might be some good locations. One thing I'll point out is, so this is an overlay. So the way an overlay works is that it's overlaid over a base zoning district. So it takes a base zoning district's district standards and enhances them. So in this case, we'll have a base zoning district of business activity center. So all the standards in the UDO that are associated with business activity center will apply here, and then we have this other layer of enhanced standards that go even further, that are more stringent with design, that are more stringent with street layouts, et cetera. So just think of it as sort of icing on the cake. And so with TOD, TOD is a little bit different. So the McCrimmon Extension area, even though we were promoting a lot of walkability, it's still more of a suburban design. But TOD is different. TOD is going to be a more urbanized place. We need a critical mass of energy, of activity to make transit work here. And transit is a real thing that's happening. This is, you know, BRT, commuter rail are on the books. BRT, I think, is funded actually now in the State Transportation Improvement Plan. So this is the real deal, and so we want to make sure that we get this right, that we properly program the site so that transit's actually viable and the station works. I should mention again, I mentioned this many times before, this was envisioned to be, this is envisioned to be the RDU stop, so a lot of connectivity between the airport and this TOD location will also likely occur. So some of the design elements, very similar to what we went through with the McCrimmon Extension District, except it's a little different, a little more urbanized. So we are again seeing more of a variety of use, trying to shift away from industrial and office flex and more towards a mixed-use environment. The difference here is that we're looking at more of a vertical mixed-use, at least in certain locations. We want to integrate ground floor commercial with residential or office above. We see the potential for structured parking. We likely may even require it, at least in some locations. We may have a mix of structured and surface parking. We feel like structured parking is sort of essential to creating the type of urban environment that is depicted in the land use plan, and so that is an important aspect of that. Again, pedestrian-friendly design, buildings oriented toward the sidewalk. We see large sidewalks with, you know, urbanized street trees, street furniture. We really want to create an inviting pedestrian experience for people getting off the train, getting off the bus rapid transit system, people coming over from the Wake Tech campus, and just generally citizens overall. I mean, we want folks to feel like this is the kind of community living room, sort of like how we were trying to do with Town Center. So we are also going to apply our own staff-in-house special architectural considerations. We're also going to try to adhere to the general street layout that we have in the land use plan. So street layouts are essential to sort of establishing the overall framework of a development. Once you have the streets laid out, you know, the buildings, you sort of can predict where the buildings are going to go. It's very important, it's sort of the first thing you do when you're master-planning a site. And so we have the authority to direct where streets and intersections can go, and so we plan on using that authority. We, again, this could be another area where we do parkland dedication. You may recall from our concept in the land use plan that we had a kind of a central park area with buildings sort of oriented towards that central park and a lot of activity energizing that park, activating that space. That's something that we could do here. We have the authority to do that as well. This also, I guess, in the meantime, the short term, we're looking at also a BAC underlying district with this TOD overlay on top. So again, all the things that apply in BAC will be here, plus the enhanced standards that staff's going to apply with the TOD overlay. So again, this is a short-term solution, just to get ahead of incompatible development to essentially save the TOD from potential disruption. We are looking at in the long term, a code that incorporates form-based code elements, and I will explain what that means now. So form-based code is a code that was developed by architects a while back who were dismayed with how traditional zoning worked. They wanted to sort of enhance the focus more on the form of the building, the way it looks, the way it functions in the public realm, and not so much the use or activities that happen in it. So traditional zoning, you have, you know, sort of the use and density is like the first and foremost thing that people focus on. You'll notice in our UDO, we have a... You'll notice in our U D O, we have a giant table permitted uses for every zoning district. Use and density are all we talk about, or not all we talk about, but a big factor in traditional zoning. And we went through that exercise, the lane use plan or future lane use map where, you know, density is really what we're focused on. Form-based code is different, completely flips that way of thinking. It's like, we don't care as much about what happens in those buildings or even really the density, as long as it looks a certain way from the street or the public realm and functions a certain way. And so this type of thinking is best used for specific areas or for placemaking. Or if you, if you're looking to create a specific type of place, form-based codes are usually what are utilized. Sometimes they're applied townwide. We're not recommending we do a townwide form-based code. But if you have like a downtown area or this TOD area or historic district, you know, those are great places to apply form-based code. So it will, like, an example would be, you know, in Charleston or Savannah, where you want to have, uh, ensure that new development is compatible with the surrounding historic context and that the buildings aren't too tall or, or they're too wide or the materials make sense. I mean, those are all great applications for, uh, form-based code. And so what staff is envisioning in the longer, wrong, excuse me, long run is a TOD code. So this is, uh, this would sort of operate similar to those of you that have been around a while to the town center code. Town center code that we have applied to our original town center plan boundaries from the 2007 town center plan, basically incorporated a lot of form-based code elements. Plan director at the time was a big form-based code fan and so he worked with, uh, the council at the time to incorporate a lot of those, uh, form-based code elements into the, into the document. And so we're envisioning doing something similar to that. We're not going full form-based code, uh, but we're really taking traditional zoning and making more of a hybrid version of it with form-based code elements. And so this would replace, so we, we actually do have a TOD district in our code. I mentioned this a while back to you all. It's, it's a floating zone. And the way that works is that it is a fully fleshed out zoning district, but you have to voluntarily apply it somewhere when you meet certain criteria. The issue is, is that unless a developer is willing to actually bring this very specific TOD district down, TOD won't ever happen. And so we thought this was a good approach back, you know, in 2013 when we actually had this drafted. But we're finding that it's problematic because if it isn't applied, then TOD can potentially not happen. And that would be a, a very poor development for overall regional connectivity. So, uh, what we want to do is just go ahead and apply TOD standards ourselves with the strategic town initiated rezoning. And so this TOD code, uh, we would envision being, you know, sort of consultant-supported or even consultant-led. We are not TOD experts. We have a lot of smart folks on staff, but we are not, uh, super, super well-versed in how TOD works. And we don't, uh, want, want to create something that isn't practical for the development community. So we want to ensure that we're getting the best and the brightest who, who know what they're doing with TOD to work with staff in creating this, this code. And so what do I mean by specific elements that we can control with this TOD code? So I'll show you real quick. Here, here is our TOD vision that's in the lanes plan. Here's the mix of uses. It's kind of hard to see with this, um, screen here, but this is the overall layout that we envision for TOD East at least. We can control things like the street type, street layout, sidewalk widths, how many trees per linear foot we have on the street, how the parallel parking works, how the angled parking works. Street layouts, again, it's, they're essential and sort of initially, they're kind of like the Jell-O mold to this development. Once you have the street layout in, sort of the rest fills in. So it's very important to get that correct. And we can do that with form-based codes. Building orientation. So if you want to activate this space right here in the middle, in the, that central park space, or we want to have a certain type of facade face Chapel Hill Road and a certain type of facade face Watkins Road, et cetera, uh, we have the authority and the ability to do that. We can orient buildings in the, in, in particular way that their best faces is facing these public spaces. And so, um, that is something we could also require. Architectural standards. So we, we already do have a lot of good architectural standards, so we can go further. If we're trying to create a very specific type of place, we can dictate things like, you know, none of this is single-family development, so we have authority over what we can dictate here. So a lot of this is commercial, multifamily, et cetera. And so we can dictate things like, um, architectural materials, window size, window placement, how the ground floor retail looks, how it functions, um, where the parking goes, et cetera. You can get very detailed. We, I think there's a balance between getting detailed enough to create the kind of place and then not stifling creativity from the development community. So we can find that sweet spot with form-based codes. And so parking, parking is another huge thing that shapes the development. We saw from the House of Levine walkthrough visuals, how much a different structured parking can make in terms of the amount of activity that you can get in a site. And so, uh, again, this could be an area where we actually require structured parking. And then if we do require it, you know, it's going to have certain design elements, design criteria for its implementation. So instead of having standalone parking decks, you could, you know, have in, in the code where parking decks need to be wrapped with buildings or, um, if you have surface lots, they need to be screened with landscaping and certain nice architectural elements or brick walls, whatever. I mean, there's a lot of design solutions we can do to make this place, um, still a nice or pedestrian-friendly urban environment, but also accommodate the parking needs. We, we know this is a transit-oriented development and we know some folks will be arriving through transit, we hope. The, the thing is that we're still in suburbia. So you're going to see the vast majority of trips still be vehicular. And so we need to accommodate those vehicles as best we can. But that doesn't mean we need to compromise the type of place that we're, we're looking to create. And then, uh, more about the pub, the public spaces, dedicated parkland. I mean, we, we have the ability to craft these. You know, we can say this is an area specifically where we want to see a park. The park needs to look a certain way and it needs to be activated by certain uses. And so, you know, ideally, we're looking at a place where, um, we have a sort of central park that's activated with ground floor retail, uh, with lots of activity, um, occurring around it so that people actually utilize the space. What we don't want is sort of some throwaway land at the back of the project that no one actually really uses, uh, that most people don't even realize it's there. We want public spaces front and center utilized. We want folks to know that it's there. It's an important amenity, especially important element in placemaking. All of this, uh, cannot happen until the airport overlay is amended. And so fortunately, and so this, we actually have an updated slide of this. I can show you if we need to, um, with the new overlay adjustment boundaries. All of this can't happen until this airport overlay is amended. As you know, uh, our current overlay prohibits all type of residential development in the, uh, area east of NC 54. Based on a discussion, uh, I think it was just as recent as Tuesday, where we changed the final, or we actually sort of certified the final boundaries of where we envisioned the airport overlay a amended area to be. And so that is something staff is also working on. We intend to delineate that. Actually, it is delineated in the newest version of the lanes plan, which I'll be sending out shortly. And so that is something we are also sort of bringing in tandem with these, um, sub-area overlay districts. So before I get into the four discussion items and feedback, uh, areas that I need from you all, are there any questions about what I've presented so far? If not, I can go right into the discussion items if you like.
Brad, can you see the chat?
Oh, no, I cannot see the chat, sorry. Well, it looks like lots of questions, so.
Start with council member.
And I'll just note that we had planned originally on ending this session, um, fairly soon. So we do want to have enough time to get into the tree preservation and other discussions as well.
Yeah, so I, it looks like, um, Councilmember Ral, are you the first up? I'm trying to see the chat here. It's grayed out for some reason on my end.
Yeah, mine was too. Um, yeah, just a real high-level question and we can, I, I just wanted to sort of highlight one, one observation. So, you know, recently, um, the, the North Hills Development had talked about, you know, developing an innovation district, which would be a combination of, you know, life sciences, entrepreneurs, all kinds of tenants, uh, you know, next to multifamily, really walkable. And I think we're getting so much momentum in Mooresville recently with, um, from an economic development, technology and pharmaceuticals. And you mentioned lab space. So, you know, is there an opportunity to have something like that, a creative concept? If a developer wanted to come in and build something like that, would that go well in this kind of area? In this area of town?
Absolutely. I mean, I, I think Mooresville deserves its own version of that. I, I think we have the authority and the ability to create that. It's just a willingness from you all to do it. I mean, we, staff is bringing something back that will get you pretty much all the way there in terms of what's envisioned in the, in the future lanes or the lanes plan. But with TOD, we can go even further. I mean, I think we, we actually have maybe a leg up on the North Hills there because we're, we're right on that TOD.
Well, we're not, yeah, that's.
Something similar.
Well, that was exactly my point. When I read that in the paper, I said, that should be in Mooresville. I mean, we're a better place than that just because of the momentum we're getting. So that's all I need to know. I think that that's very exciting and I hope if there's any people in the business community listening, we're, we're making changes so you can make your investment here. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Sure. Councilmember Garamella, I think, is the next one I see.
Yeah, hey Brad, you know, I'm new to this form-based zoning. So is there a tabular column that can be created with an example? Say, you know, you go with traditional, you know, these are the things that presently the, you know, developer has to do compared to a form-based? Because I'm, I'm trying to analyze, you know, what all additional things they have to do. Because many times we are so focused on doing or not, you know, from, from a developer point of view, how much is it, uh, more expensive? And what are the things that we are putting as part of this, uh, form-based? Because it, it looks good on paper, right? Like, you know, make it look good, but from their point of view, you know, what, what are they doing extra for us, uh, to make this area look good from then the traditional, you know, rezoning that we do? So that, I, I don't know if you can take a, a block of, you know, and then give an example at a later time. I mean, that would be pictorially and, uh, will be very helpful for me to understand because I have no clue how form-based, other than the nice, pretty pictures you showed, you know, what does it really quantify for?
Sure, yeah. And, and we, and we, again, this is, this would be a hybrid. It would actually probably be more even in the traditional zoning realm with form-based code elements sprinkled in. So it, it, look to the, if you're looking for an example of this already, the town center code is a great example of that. We are going to have very specific diagrams and graphics to show where buildings, you know, should situate. But we're not going to get overly prescriptive with things that don't need to be prescribed. So as long as it's in alignment with the lanes plan, nothing should be a surprise to you all. Some form-based codes, like the real hardcore form-based codes in some of these historic cities, they, they have a menu of buildings, like literal menu of buildings, like workshop building one, workshop building two, lodging building three. I mean, and those are what is, are used. It's, it's not so much the use. So we're not doing any of that. We're just going to give you more design orientation stuff.
Yeah, yeah. I even like take, uh, the noise attenuation, right? For example, and there, um, I know like I have two windows that I, you know, basically change it for noise attenuation and they're damn expensive. So I'm just looking at that as an example, right? Like, you know, when we are putting that and it is needed because of the airport overlay area and close to approximation to the airport, what does that, you know, quantify? Because, um, in terms of, you know, dollars, you know, right now, we have the downtown. We don't know anything, the cost that is going, you know, if it is like $20 million, you know, if we have the form base, is it $25 million? Just throwing numbers, I have no freaking clue what it means, but just wanted to understand, uh, from, you know, on my point of view, uh, that is one. And the other, other thing I wanted to ask is, I asked last time, like, you know, um, flex is a role of, uh, is a zoning for industrial. But if we could blend a very light use, like, you know, flex space into this area, is that possible or is it like, uh, not possible because it is BAC? So, because there are few people, like, uh, I keep talking, they are always looking for, you know, kind of a flex where they can think of a Grace Park with downstairs with kind of having a flex and up something else. So, um, what, and those are two different uses completely, right? Because the flex doesn't allow, um, the other use, uh, because it is industrial versus BAC or RAC. So is there a kind of a mix that we can do? I was just having, curious.
Potentially, uh, I think the important thing is how it looks. So unfortunately, a lot of like light industrial flex is just like one-story, super-long, wide buildings, very poor, um, pedestrian orientation, usually surrounded by a bunch of parking. If we can get the form right, then yeah, I don't see why we couldn't do something like that. It would, it would probably be on the lighter side of industrial. We don't want to have heavy industrial type uses. I'm thinking more like tech-oriented, um, type uses. We, we've sort of, in the lanes plan, we've got to broaden the scope of the BAC to include things like biotech, um, lab space. Lab space is sort of like a light industrial type orientation. So yeah, we, we could certainly look at that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. Good presentation.
Looks like, uh, Councilmember Rabadi is the next one.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the, on, uh, slides 12 and 13. And I just have some questions about this, um, ground floor commercial. So is this, I, I, I mean, I know just drawings, but conceptually, is this like a, say a restaurant in the front and then opens up to this back area? Is that a different business? Or is it, does the, it's like go all the way to the back of the building? Like, how does stuff like that work in buildings this size?
Sure, yeah. So typically you want to, um, you don't need to have the entire building lined with ground floor commercial, but you really want it strategically oriented in places where you want to see a lot of activity. So if you want to see the ground, if you want to see that park space in the middle activated, for instance, or, uh, or the area along NC 54, you sort of orient it towards those high-traffic, high-visibility areas. It's, it's ultimately, it's retail, it's service. They need, um, eyeballs on their storefronts. And so usually you don't tuck it behind in sort of, uh, random spaces in the back of the development. Usually try to put it front and center or at least in highly visible locations. So these would function, um, you, a lot of times they're like 60 feet deep. You got 15-foot ceilings, um, in the building. It's not literally the entire ground floor oftentimes. In this case, though, in, in the concept, you could get a, a full ground floor of, of commercial all the way back to that parking structure. There's a number of ways you can do it. I live in a building that's similar to this where you have sort of podium parking and then, uh, retail in the front and then you can access the, the retail from the street or you, and employees can come in the back, um, through employee doors. So there's a number of ways you can design it. The important thing is, is that you have enough ground floor activity occurring, uh, on the street level.
Okay. So the, I'm trying to figure out where the parking is here. So I think that, um, this one building, number five, is parking deck. Is there any other parking?
Yeah, so you have, uh, parking deck. I don't know if you can see the little, uh, white hand floating around here. Parking deck here and the, and the first two red buildings, uh, they have parking, structured parking. This building back here has structured parking. So we're looking at three parking decks in this concept alone. Everything else is surface parking, but the key about the surface parking is that it's almost totally screened by buildings. So from the pedestrian experience, pedestrian realm, you're not, you're seeing building facade. You're not seeing parking lots.
Okay, but the deck face Chapel Hill Road.
Uh, they do not. So that, well, so the, the buildings wrap the parking deck. That's, that's another thing you could require is that, so you'll see that the building sort of almost fully encapsulates that parking structure. So from Chapel Hill.
The middle part is parking.
Sorry.
Late to the party. The middle part is the parking deck.
Yeah.
And the building is around the parking deck. Okay, all right. My bad, I didn't, I didn't realize that. Okay, um, it would be really nice if we could maximize the space in these layouts. I mean, this is a tiny little piece of space. Like, I mean, I know that this is just a drawing, but I'm just saying that. Like, I mean, I know that this is just a drawing, but I'm just saying that, you know, I, the, I just, these buildings come like right up to the street. And I'm just thinking of those townhouses on, um, Mooresville Carpenter Road? On McCrimmon Drive. I can't remember exactly where they are, but the ones where that, like, literally the, the houses come right up to the street and, um- Sorry?
It might be Cod Place, uh, the houses were, you know.
And the townhouses come right up to the street. I really don't like that. I would prefer to see more, more of a setback and more green space or like some trees or something.
Yeah, so one, one thing we can do, so we, we have to balance walkable urban development with the visual impact it has on the roadway, right? So one thing we can do here, and I sort of call it out in this example right here, is that we can have lower stories or less impactful buildings at the front end of this project where it interfaces with Chapel Hill Road. And then as it goes up or further back into the development, you can increase that height gradually. So it's not as visually impactful from the ground, ground level. You can also do things like terracing the floors. So one thing that I think would have helped, and I, I know Bainbridge gets criticized a lot for the way, you know, kind of imposes itself on sidewalk. I think they did a lot of good stuff of putting the parking behind the buildings, but the mass and scale of that project has been heavily criticized by you all. And I think one thing that could have really helped it, or there's a couple of things, but one thing in particular is sort of stepping back after a certain amount of stories. So if you have three stories and you step back, you know, fifteen feet, um, the mass isn't off. And also breaking up building facades, not having a super-long, monotonous-looking building facade is something that makes a major difference in the way a, a building is, um, interacting with the public realm. So having a, a maximum limit on the, the size of a facade is also a big thing that we could absolutely require for this area to sort of soften that impact. What we don't want to do is buffer and landscape these buildings out of sight. We want them right up on this, like, especially internally, we want them right up on the sidewalk. Think about North Hills, think about downtown Raleigh, Apex, all those places, those urban walkable places, the buildings are right up to the sidewalk. If you pull them too far away, you know, you sort of, you sort of basically break that connection between the sidewalk and the building. We want to make sure that they're in harmony. Um, but, but in terms of the visual impact, the, the sense of scale up front, yeah, we could certainly modify that to soften that interface.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Fender, I think, is the next one up.
Yes, good morning, Brad. Uh, do you mind going back to this slide, um, that was, uh, for McCrimmon overlay? Um, the picture, slide four.
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm wondering here, you know, it's kind of, um, uh, kind of an extension of what Ann was talking about. You know, we want this, I like the idea of having the, the seating, the extra seating, um, and having this walkable pedestrian-friendly space. But I'm wondering if we couldn't, um, put that outdoor seating in the front of the restaurant or retail. Um, you know, when we've seen that at other places, I think it looks really nice.
Yep.
And, you know, it, it has the effect of pushing the, the building, you know, slightly back off the sidewalk. And you have that, a more of a buffer, um, between the sidewalk and the building, but it's the, it's the outdoor seating.
Yep. We, we can actually require that. Um, we, we can actually, now, we're, we're trying to not over-prescribe things so that developers can have some creativity with how they orient patio seating. Um, but if, but certainly there's plenty of cities, um, Raleigh's one of them, that requires a certain outdoor seating, outdoor sidewalk dining, um, that needs to occur in front of, of a building. Um, and in, and nowadays with outdoor dining, you know, all the rage, partially due because of the pandemic, um, it, it might be an even more important thing to factor in. So that's certainly something that we can consider. Um, it, I don't know, you know, we, we could get as prescriptive as it has to be directly in front of the building, or we can say it has to be somewhere. Um, but it's, it's really up to you all. You all are sort of the architects of this. So you all will be shaping the, the code itself. And so if that's something you want to see, absolutely, we can bring that back.
Well, and I think this is one area where we need to be prescriptive. I mean, we are, um, we're compromising with, you know, not requiring structured parking in this area. We're compromising between the RDU and the developers with allowing some multifamily, um, apartments in this area. I think, um, and plus, I just think it looks better. It's a more pedestrian-friendly, um, I, um, dynamic by putting this outdoor seating in front of the restaurant. I mean, in addition, you're not going to have restaurant, 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 restaurant anyway, um, so it's going to be broken up. So I think this, this is one area where I'm, um, definitely in favor of being a bit more restrictive and having that outdoor seating, um, in front of the restaurant. Also, um, so to go back to your questions that you have for us, I mean, I am definitely in favor of doing, um, more of the form-based code. Um, you know, and like you were saying, it doesn't have to be overly prescriptive like Charleston or Savannah. It can be a partial form-based. I think we have to do that, um, or else we're gonna end up with more apartments, like you were just talking about with Bainbridge. Though every time I, I drive by there, I mean, those are just so ugly and, um, so up close to the road and the sidewalk. Or we're going to end up with more of, um, trailside apartments, um, that are, so I mean, where they are at my, um, McCrimmon and Church Street, you know, the very next block is a TOD, uh, area. If we don't make that a, a partial form-based code, I mean, we're going to end up with a complete wall through there. And I think we've seen that a lot of the residents, I'm upset with that apartment complex being there, looking the way it is. Um, so I'm definitely in favor of doing a partial form-based code. I'm okay with horizontal mixed use in McCrimmon, um, but there again, that's why I think we need to require the, um, uh, uh, seating in front of the building. Um, and my last point is, um, it's part of this, you know, you're talking about the, um, parkland space. I think we, we have to do that. I think that is another area where we need to have dedicated parkland space or we're not going to get it. And, um, you know, and that is just, uh, in addition to base, based on, you know, all of our comments, um, from the public of wanting more green space and more parks. I mean, this is the area, you know, one of the few areas we actually have the authority to dictate, um, park space without, you know, having to actually acquire the land. So I think we need to leverage that authority to, um, as much as we can, um, because we don't have that authority anywhere else. So, um, definitely in favor of dictating the, uh, park space i- in the McCrimmon area and in the TOD area. So that's all I have. Thanks, Brad.
Sure. And I know I'm, I'm getting prompted to speed this up a little bit. So I, and if there's no more questions, I'm, I'm happy to just jump right back into these feedback, um, items. So it looks like there's some, uh, Councilmember Rabadi has some feedback, uh, about these items. Uh, if anyone wants to just provide some, some quick statements about these four items, just to cover, we, uh, we have a TOD code in the works, potentially in the long run, if that's okay with you all. We, staff would like to pursue that project with the help of a consultant. Um, if you all are in agreement with horizontal mixed use in the McCrimmon extension area, um, it, does council wish to incentivize structured parking in the McCrimmon extension area? You know, we, we, and plan directors mentioned this at the mini-retreat, um, the only real way to incentivize structured parking is to allow more billable area, hard, uh, height, parking reductions, things like that. Um, so it's not a simple as, well, if we have structured parking, we can get more green space. Not quite. Um, you're going to see a desire for more billable space. Structured parking is extremely expensive. It's like twenty thousand dollars a space. And so they're going to have to make up for that cost with more, um, development activity. Um, and then finally, uh, a big policy decision is, do you want to consider, um, the area south of McCrimmon Parkway and TOD West, uh, as part of the overlay area? Or do you want to leave it out? Um, I think there was some discussion about, so there's Adams Products, which is our, a, a large industrial, uh, area. Um, that would continue to operate and would be grandfathered in or non-conforming use, legally non-conforming use. Um, uh, but it would not be allowed to sort of expand in its capacity. And same with other uses in these areas. So I just wanted to clarify that. But yeah, happy to take any more feedback if you have it. So I see, um, Mayor Colley, you have some feedback?
Yes, please. Thank you for a great presentation. I'll start with the fourth one, the Adams Products.
Sure.
Uh, and I, uh, my notes are what are the pros and cons? Um, and from earlier, it sounds like we want to make sure that we don't have incompatible use coming in, uh, before we're ready. So I would, uh, be in favor of including that in, uh, these discussions, um, understanding that they, uh, will be a non-conforming use for a while. But, uh, we want to give the signal that we don't necessarily want them expanding, investing and expanding more anyway, because we're seeing a different vision for that down the road. Um, in regards to the first one, supportive of exploring partial form-based code, need to learn more about that. Um, sounds, I would be a little bit concerned that we lose the guardrails about the number of residents. If we only care about the form and not about what the use is, I'd be concerned that we end up with more apartments that were, than were, what we're looking for. A TOD, I understand, will need a lot to support the transit. So, um, I just need a little bit more info on that. Um, was North Hills developed in form-based? Because I really like Midtown Park. Um, I'd love to have something like that.
I think that's more of a planned development, uh, from what I understand. Um, I don't know if it has a, they have like, sort of, you have Parker's Village as a planned development district where it has its own design standards. I think, I, don't quote me on that, but I think that's how it was developed. They wanted to do a public structured parking agreement with the city, I think, back in like two thousand and six when it was first, um, being developed. I, I don't know if that ever actually materialized. I think everything's private, planned development.
Okay, so there Midtown Park there, that's private property?
I believe that's all private. I can, but you know what? I, we can fact-check that, um, because I'm, I'm sort of speaking off the top of my head here and I don't want to say anything incorrect. But yeah, I think, I think you mentioned that the North Hills Park is a great example of what we could see in the TOD. Um, so we can certainly require something like that, absolutely.
In any of these sub-areas, if we end up with something, um, with a green space in the middle, I'd like to know whether or not it's going to be more like Park West, which is their property that is used by them and it's not really for us to use. I'd love it to be a civic property that we could use for our events, um, at our discretion. Uh, horizontal mixed use for McCrimmon, you, um, if it vertical space preserves trees and open space, I would prefer vertical. Uh, that's very important to our residents, understanding that there might be some trade-outs, uh, from McCrimmon Parkway with height parking reductions. Uh, if it ends up preserving the green space, um, I'd be in favor of looking into incentivizing the structured parking. We made very clear to those property owners that we're not requiring it. So we, we want to keep emphasizing that. But anytime that we can have structured parking that allows more space for them to do buildable, I wouldn't necessarily want to allow them more residential in that space. More commercial and retail would be the incentives I would give there instead of more people. Um, those are my thoughts on those four. And though, I really like the prompting questions. They help me a lot. So thank you for that.
Sure. Anyone else? So I'll take silence as either you all are very confused or, um, you all are so enthusiastic about what I presented that you're good to go. So I'm hoping it's the latter. Oh, got a comment. Mayor Proton, I think.
Brad, I'm, I'm, I'm not confused. I'm very enthusiastic. Hope you had that one. Um, I, I'm, I'm, um, I'm good with everything you have here right now. Um, in, in, uh, in, hope, hoping to save some time here because we're going over. Um, um, a lot of good comments have been made, but, um, um, move forward.
All right. Great. So I'll, I'll, I'll take that as the final word since I know, we know a lot to cover today. So we will move forward with what's been presented, if everyone's okay with that. And, uh, provide you some more information, uh, on specifics in the future. So I will relinquish control here. Thank you so much, everyone.
Okay. Um, echo that. Thank you, everyone. Um, just to note, we probably are about twenty-five minutes over time. Um, so just keep that in mind. We still have some meaty discussions ahead and we don't get through, um, everything. Talk to Manager Page about how to work that in, um, another time, but didn't want to cut that off. It was some good discussion.
All right. Good morning, Council. Um, I'm Chris Lawson, Planning Manager. We're going to talk today about, uh, tree preservation and parkland dedication, so. So, um, we'll begin by saying that I wasn't involved with Laney's Plan, but myself and other staff listened to the comments and concerns from citizens and from council. And we understand the importance of these two topics. Um, I, I've divided the presentation between each of the two topics, but a lot of the regulations kind of flow together. So my plan is to run through the entire PowerPoint and then open the floor up for discussion, um, and other questions. If you need a point of clarification on a certain slide, please feel free to put it in the chat or, um, just, just ask it out loud if I skip it. I think we're scheduled till twenty, ten twenty-five, so I'll try to get through it so we can hear, um, a lot of your ideas and thoughts. Um, so let's just jump into it. The first part covers UDO Section five point four, which is tree preservation. So, oh, I'm struggling with the slides. Okay, there we go. All right, so a lot of words in this slide, but in short, my goal is to provide council an overview of the tree preservation section of UDO, describe how it's structured, how staff administers it, um, what I personally think works, what might need tweaked. And really to understand what council's vision for tree preservation, uh, looks like. And, you know, based on that vision, if the UDO needs amended, um, really try to get some specifics for what you're looking for so I can bring text amendments, um, back to council at a future meeting. So the, over the next few slides, I'll kind of just describe how, um, tree preservation is regulated. Um, the first one here is probably the main part of our tree preservation standards. So this is our, uh, table which tells developers what percentage of existing tree canopy they must, um, preserve as part of the development. So the far-left column identifies the existing tree canopy cover. So that, that says, if your site is one hundred percent covered in trees, you have to, um, go by the top row, which is ninety-two to a hundred percent. Um, then the middle column is, the middle and right column is what kind of development, you know, are you proposing? Is it a residential development or is it a non-residential, um, or mixed-use development? Um, notice that single-family detached is not listed anywhere. And that is because the town's local legislation, which authorizes tree preservation, does not allow for the town to mandate preservation with single-family detached subdivisions. Um, so once both the use of the site, so say it's a commercial site, and the percentage of existing tree canopy cover is identified, then staff uses this table to calculate how much percentage of tree save area, tree area must be saved as part of the development. So just for an example, let's say there's a site that's one hundred percent covered in trees. So you're gonna, you're gonna work on off this top row right here, ninety-two to a hundred percent. Um, developer wants to build a hotel. That's a non-residential use. That means that ten percent of that site must remain as tree save area. And so what that means- area of the site. And that's where you'll see the orange fencing for developments around town. It lines the tree preservation area, just so during development, nobody comes in and accidentally, you know, takes out trees they weren't supposed to. Okay. So now we know for a site, you know, how much percentage of the site is supposed to remain as tree preservation area. The UDO then has a priority order. So it's a four-part priority order, which I've listed on the slide. Basically, the highest priority order is our mature deciduous trees, and from there, it kind of goes down to non-mature trees. If you'll notice, number three is existing specimen trees in their root zones. Specimen trees are just trees that are 24 inches in caliber or larger. So when they, when a developer designs a tree preservation plan, they're supposed to identify the existing trees on site, which priority order they comply with, and then work from number one down to number four. So they've got a, you know, they have to save 10% of a site, but then within that 10%, this priority order dictates which, which 10% of the existing trees are saved. So, and we start again with that mature deciduous trees. Okay. So it's kind of the basic function of how, you know, the town regulates trees. I'll just say some strengths. The biggest strength of the ordinance is we don't allow, the town does not allow a complete clear cutting of sites, for the most part. If you'll notice on the table that I had, if the site is less than 6% with existing trees, covered in existing trees, then we allow all of it to be removed. But that is the only time. So the only other strength is that we get a tree survey for each development, which shows what kind of trees there are, and other, other information like that. So I call this slide challenges instead of weaknesses. Basically, I'll just list a few things. UDO doesn't say onsite where a tree must be saved. So often, this means trees are pushed to the back of the site, or wherever on the site the developer feels will work best for them. So going back to the priority order, if almost the entire site is the same priority order, that gives the developer a lot of flexibility on where they want to put the trees, not necessarily where it'll work better, best for the town. I hope that kind of makes sense. So basically, they can often put them behind the buildings, or away from the road, and when, you know, you or I, as an average citizen, or town council member, or town staff drives by, we might not really be able to tell, did that site save trees? Because they're pushed kind of far to the back, we're not sure where the property lines My second bullet point refers to that, in some ways, the town's UDO almost incentivizes removing existing trees, where the developer's going to have to plant landscaping anyway. And really what I'm referring to here is street yard landscape buffers, and other kind of buffers. I'd really like to see more, I guess my question for you all, and I'm going to get into this later, is, do you want to see natural growth as a landscape buffer? Or do you prefer the more manicured new plantings that we often get around town? The third bullet point, really, the UDO does not provide for a minimum size of tree which needs to be preserved or replaced, if it's removed, or potentially removed. Just as staff, I'll tell you, the council, that this creates a lot of confusion or conflict sometimes with developers, because the UDO doesn't identify a minimum-sized tree. So we'll have developers say, you know, I've got a tree that's, you know, a foot and a half out of the ground, is that, does that require to be saved? And we say, has to be saved, because there's no minimum size. So, you know, if there's, if there's a minimum-sized tree that we can identify, I think that would really help with the execution and reviewing plans. All right, so, next few slides, I've just got a few aerial comparisons showing, you know, what, what kind of tree preservation the town is getting with our current UDO setup. So not really an indictment or endorsement of these developments, just, just recent examples. The first one is shown on the screen. This is a townhome development along Church Street named Myers Point. As you can see, most of the trees were saved along the rear of the property, which in this case, kind of made sense, because there's a stream buffer, and then a railroad tracks running behind the development. Again, just an example. The next one is a multifamily, an apartment complex called Broad Central Side. I think we actually mentioned it earlier when Brad was talking. This is along McCrimmon between Town Hall Drive and Church Street. It's a large site that saved a lot of trees, but as you can kind of tell by the outline, the trees were all saved on the far left of the property, and the buildings ended up being placed pretty much right along the road. And I'll say, this development also used an option in the UDO, which allows developers to reduce the amount of trees that they would have to be, save otherwise, as long as they replace them somewhere else onsite. And so this developer did replace trees within the planted area you can see here. You can't really tell where they replaced them, but they were within that planted area on the left side of the site. So I partially picked this site to talk about, because we did seem to get a lot of public reaction to it. And my personal theory is not that it's necessarily about how many trees were saved, but that one day, people drove by, the whole site's clear, and all of a sudden, there's buildings right on the road. So I guess, as part of the conversation, I'd like to hear council's thoughts on, you know, if trees were saved closer to the road, maybe at the Church Street McCrimmon intersection, just on the right side here, would that have lessened some of the, would you prefer that, instead of having trees kind of grouped on one side? I'll admit, Frank. So, again, just a few examples to talk about. So, let's move on. So I've got a few other slides, so considerations. And really, I just listed everything I'd really like council to think about, and maybe kind of provide some guidance to staff on what you want to see. So really, do we want newly even spaced plantings? Or are we looking for more natural growth with different-sized trees? Maybe not space perfectly every 10 feet for the tree? So just natural growth? Do we want that? Where on a development site do, would the town prefer to see tree state? And do we want to get involved and prescriptive about that? Adjusting Table 5.4.4A, that is the table I showed earlier, which says what percentage must be saved? Do we want to increase, reduce that? Do we want to increase it across the board? Is there certain sizes we want to adjust? Do we want to allow developers to, so we have a, these common open space requirements, which I'll kind of cover later. Do we want to allow developers to reduce the amount of space dedicated to common open space, and increase the amount of tree preservation? And then, sorry, I got a few other notes. Closing loopholes are allowable reductions. So what I mean by that is, you know, staff identified a few loopholes, I guess we'll call it in the UDO, which allows developers to reduce the amount of trees that would normally be saved, and replace them. But there's no provision in the UDO which allows, or which discourages developers from replacing them with trees that would already be required. So sometimes what we've had is, developers will reduce the amount of tree save area, and then replace those trees in a landscape buffer, when they'd already be required to have a landscape buffer. So I plan on making, presenting some text amendments to kind of clean that up, either way, but I just wanted to pitch that out there. And then, my last bullet point is other ideas. So, you know, any other ideas council would have? So, let's see. So key questions for town council. So here are really the big points that I'd really like to have some feedback on, so if text amendments are needed, I can craft them and, you know, provide something that council wants to see as far as your vision for trees. So I'll just run through them. Prioritization of location of trees. Again, do we want to keep the current priority order? Or does council really prefer, you know, staff to work with developers and say, you know, you can't just push all the trees to the back of the site? They have to be either at the corner, along the street, maybe a different area. And really, that depends on, does council prefer, you know, one of those options bullet points? So you prefer a streetscape buffer that is natural growth? Do you prefer habitat protection, environmental feature protection? Say there is a stream buffer, say there is some kind of wetlands, or some other environmental feature? Is that our goal? Are we trying to protect that? Or kind of what, what's the feelings on that? The middle bullet point, amending the retention standards table. You know, say council decides, we would like to increase the amount of tree percentage saved. Okay, how much? What, what, what's the level? How far would you like to go? And then the sub-bullet point there says, does the size of parcel matter? You know, in Morrisville, especially with the opening of McCrimmon Extension, we've got some very large parcels, but most of the rest of the town, we have fairly small parcels left, that are going to be a little trickier to develop, if we require a lot of that lot to be saved as trees. Trade-offs in lieu of other requirements. You know, I think, when, when I look at the UDO, it's split up in different sections of different types of requirements, but when you're looking at developing an overall site, those, all those little requirements we have really compound on each other. Do we want to, as a town, say, we value trees over, like I said, common open space? Parking standards? Do we want to reduce parking, if you'll save more trees? Is there other, other, other requirements we want to kind of trade off? And then really, any other amendments? Again, this is, I listened to the land use plan, I know we had a lot of citizen comments on trees, and I know council members have the same feelings. So I really would like to hear some, some thoughts and some guidance on, you know, what do you think's working with the UDO? When you drive around town, you look at new sites? What would you like to see tweaked? What is your general vision for trees? Because my goal, again, is really to craft some text amendments, if you think they're needed, present to council, and maybe change the way we do trees. Let's see. So that is the end of my tree preservation section. I'm being asked to stop here, so we can open up for discussion due to our time constraints this morning. Let me see. So it looks like council member Ral, you, I think you entered the first question.
Yeah, so, sorry, this is a negative, but I, for me, I would like to see an increase in the percentage of trees saved. Just giving you as a directive of what I think isn't working is that we approve developments, and then more trees are being taken down in areas where it's, you know, for the public, because I drive by for developments that have been approved, I just see just so much clear cutting. So I think moving forward, we need to have precedence, and, you know, however the staff does it, and I want to hear from other colleagues, of whether that's increasing the percentage, looking at, you know, forcing them to, in some way creatively, looking at doing it more in front of the property, rather than the back or side. You know, so that's just a high-level observation to give you some feedback. I'm not as averse to this issue as probably some of my colleagues. The other thing I, the other thing I want to mention for the council and the staff is that I've been researching, and it's come to my attention, and I'm saying this for transparency to the public, that, you know, we've had situations in the past where, or recently, where there's been a pushback of multifamily development, but what's, what I've become aware of is that in low-density, single-family detachment, developers can fully clear cut their trees, and the council really can't regulate that at all. The legislature's taking that away from us. So I want to get your feedback, Chris, on that, and the staff, because I think with multifamily, we have more, and maybe Frank Gray can weigh in on that, you know, because right now, the way I look at it, if someone put a single-family development in Morrisville, we have very little, we have less control of regulating the number of trees they can take down than if we had multifamily. Is that true, Chris? And is there options for us to work to address that, either with the General Assembly, or any kind of solutions out there? And I say that, because there's a perception out there that if we have single-family development, we're going to cut down less trees. And I do not think, I think that is actually not accurate.
I will answer it in this manner. I'll say that if we have multifamily developments, the town has much more prescriptive control over requiring tree save. And certainly, leading up to this discussion, I've done research on if we can or cannot require a single-family home to preserve trees. You know, town attorney Frank Gray and I talked, I think, last week on the phone, and we agreed that the town's local legislation does not allow the town to require tree save for single-family home detached. See, I, to answer your question, I would agree that if multifamily, we have, as a town, much more control over saving trees than single-family homes.
Counsel, last one. Councilor Gray, what are our options then for, is there any wiggle room, or anything we can do to increase our authority to regulate clear cutting with single-family detached?
No, sir, I don't believe there is. We're, legislature's basically prohibited regulation of tree preservation and cutting when there's a single-family housing development. You can change the law, but I don't, I don't know how realistic that is, but with something within our own control, no, there is no authority to do that.
I'll stop my questions for now. I'm sorry I went over my time. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Let's see, I think council member Rabadi, you were next up.
Yeah, so I think that in terms of prioritization of the locations, I do think that habitat protection and environmental feature protection should come before streetscape. I think it's very important, habitat protection, especially in light of the amount of development that has happened recently, and will continue to happen. I think that habitat protection and environmental feature protection come before streetscapes, for me. I vastly prefer natural to the manicured one-tree-every-10-feet look, and I definitely think we should close every loophole that we can, that allows developers to take down trees, and then, you know, because the thing, it's not even just the fact that they replace them with trees that they had to put in anyway, but they replace them with trees that are, that are non-native to North Carolina, that are fast-growing, but that don't, don't thrive. And they looked, and they, you know, and they spaced them out in a way that, that doesn't permit really the trees to thrive in the way that they should, if they used the right kind of tree, spaced them appropriately, planted them appropriately. I don't know if there's anything that we can do about that, but, I mean, the, yeah, okay, so there's, I'm sorry, I was off on a tangent there. So I'm for amending the retention standards table. I'd like to see it go up 1% to 2% at least, across the board. And the size of the parcel, that means that like, larger sites would save, if the largest sites had to save on a, on a stepstool kind of basis, 1% more for every 50 acres, I think that would be, I don't think that would be onerous, a burden on the developer. And the, the reduction of other requirements in lieu of preservation. Okay, so I don't know what that means, but I do think that we should really carefully look at parkland payments in lieu, as opposed to actual preservation of green space on a site. I think that we've been really quick to take those payment in lieu, and I understand that we, you know, that they're very valuable, and we will be using some of them to put in the Crabtree Nature Park, like, I get all that. But I think that what we've ended up with is development sites with no, with no or little natural green space preserved. And as far as, I mean, this is just a blanket statement, as far as not getting another development anywhere in town that looks like those cotton place apartments, anything you can do to make that happen would make me happy. I, every time I go by those, I just cringe, and I feel like, you know, I feel like it's kind of our fault, because we didn't structure codes in a way that wouldn't allow that. And, you know, but now we know, like, now we know what that's going to look like, and, you know, let's, let's not let that happen again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, I think you were after her.
Thank you, Chris. This is a lot of information for us on a
This is a lot of information for us, on a Sunday morning, so, congratulations for getting through the presentation. I'd like to answer your questions, but I have some other statements as well. So, getting to your list, the prioritization and location of trees, I would like to see the trees in the habitat protection, you know, area, in the buffers, where we have naturally occurring waters and creeks, of course, some of that might not be optional for them, depending on their site plan. But, outside of that, I'd like to see more trees and greenery in the front of the sites. It's nice to walk by, whether you're on a sidewalk, or a greenway, naturally, you know, green trees, bushes, et cetera, like that. So, it'd be nice to see more green in the town, as you're moving about the various neighborhoods and businesses. So, I would also like to see us incentivize the preservation of trees on a site. How do we incentivize, is probably another discussion, but the parks payment lieu that Councilmember Robati talked about, would allow us to have something that we could offer, credits. If they extended more trees, in a percentage way, they would have a less obligation for parks payment lieu. If they offered more open space, they would possibly get enough, you know, more credits of parks payment lieu. We can look at other credits for a plan, so that we can get more trees to be preserved, I think. We could also, possibly, going back to Councilmember Rowell's concern about single-family, do we have the authority to offer credits to single-family home development, for increasing trees, or, you know, providing more natural areas, or something like that? Maybe we can't restrict, but maybe we can incentivize to allow for more tree preservation to occur. I would like to talk about the type of trees that we're asking to be replaced, or whatever. In my neighborhood, we had requirements for certain types of trees, and they had about, you know, eight, ten varieties they could pick. A lot of the cheaper buffer trees are those really, you know, fifty-foot-tall pine trees, and we had pine trees in the buffer between two houses, back-to-back, that create hurricane hazards, and stuff like that. So, in addition to naturally occurring trees, we should look at the type of trees, non-native or native, that are being provided in those categories of what they can choose for replacement. That's a, probably not a quick fix, but it's something to consider. I prefer naturally occurring spaces, over manicured, highly, you know, decorative kind of things, because I feel it, it gives a mental picture of what you would expect in a naturally occurring park, or something like that, and we have so little trees now, manicured trees don't necessarily cause the same kind of experience as a naturally occurring one, so I'm just, I prefer the woods, as you might say it simply. So, now, to my other issue, that's not on your list. The town in Morrisville has to abide by the tree preservation guidelines, that we ask our developers to abide by. And, it depends on the use, and it depends on a lot of stuff. But, there was a situation where I was kind of shocked, as a council member, and I know it was done for all the right reasons, is, at Indian Creek Trailhead, there was a beautiful length of greenway, that started out the park, and went all the way to, past downtown Hall Drive, almost to the farmer's market, where it was all tree-lined. And then, one day, I was not aware, but all the trees were clear-cut, so that there could be a stormwater project that was started. I was shocked, as a town council member, and as a resident, because I didn't realize that we were going to put the stormwater on that piece of land, I thought it was actually gonna go on the demonstration project somewhere, and I was just wondering how that was calculated, how are they saving trees when they clear-cut, and that they're gonna replant, and it's a beautiful design when it's done, but, I just felt like that violated quite a lot of my principles, I want a naturally occurring area, it was a beautiful area before, and to replant, and what kind of replantings there were. So, just, that's an aside, it's not actionable, at all, it's just, I would like the town to consider, you know, where they are gonna develop, like the fire station, and maybe some other projects, how they're going to preserve trees in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Mayor Colley?
Thank you, Mr. Larson, great presentation, going down the key questions. I put environmental feature protection as primary, essentially wetlands and stream buffers, I think is important to preserve in those spaces, and not let the developer kind of bait and switch on those. I don't want them to have to be able to double-dip, and say this counts twice, or something like that. After that, the appearance to the streetscape is really important, your Myers Point example was a really good one, in that, I love the fact that we're preserving trees, for the environment and climate change, but it's way in the back, so it's not like anyone gets any real benefit out of those. I definitely prefer the natural, rather than the manicured look. I don't, I'm not in favor of allowing them to cut and replace with what might be non-native trees, or anything like that. Naturally occurring trees thrive a lot more, and are already established, and are a good thing. The retention standards table, if you could bring up that slide, I'd appreciate it. I'm definitely in favor of amending that, a few years ago, when we went ahead and actually created these current standards. There was a different council, the world was different, that was before the Paris Climate Agreement. So, the world has changed, and now is the time to make a bold statement, in order to try to change the direction, and we can really model good behavior. So, essentially, when you take column one, and multiply it by column two, that's what you end up with. So, for example, if you go down to forty-four percent, by thirty-one percent, you end up with thirteen-point-six percent preserved, when you're talking about single-family attached. What I would like to see, and I know this is a very different, but bold purpose, is to make sure that that calculation ends up at thirty percent. Wake County is looking for thirty percent open space preservation, if we could preserve thirty percent of tree canopy on every site, which means that if it already has only thirty percent left, we're saving all of that, not multiplying it by something. But, I would like to see thirty percent tree preservation on every site, and I know developers are gonna not be happy with even the thought of that, and I know it's very difficult, but we are at the point where, if we want to make a difference, we need to do something bold, and try to make sure that we're trying to approach a number like that, because the trees are one of the few things that's actually trying to keep our climate in place, and the more we can preserve, rather than have to try to replace, and fix things later, the whole idea of an ounce of prevention, worth a pound of cure. So, now's the time, hopefully it's not too late. The size of the parcel, I don't think that really matters, I think the trees, we need the trees. Trade-offs in lieu of other requirements, if this is necessary, I'd be in favor of it, because I think climate change should be a lens that we're looking through everything. You talked earlier about the minimum size of tree, you said one-point-five feet would have to be retained at this time, I'd love to hear what staff would suggest, in order to meet the needs of the developer, because we want to work with developers, we want to be friendly, but we want to make sure that we're preserving the trees, and I was a little concerned about the Broadstone Trailside, in that, you mentioned that they cut down trees somewhere, and then put them in the tree preservation area, are we talking about purely the number of trees, or the site acreage that is preserved? Just so I'm clear.
So, I'm trying to explain, I'm trying to think back how that one was done, so, when we start, the developer knows the percentage of trees on site, that they have to save, when they reduce it, they take whatever square footage they're reducing it by, and within that square footage, they count the trees, and they add up the total caliper, and that tells them how much have you replaced with. So, I think that's how that one was handled, but they planted them within the new tree preservation easement area.
So, it's just adding more trees to where we already have trees?
That sound ended up playing out on that site plan, yes.
Okay, so, I guess, gotta find the balance of, we want tree space, not necessarily just more dense trees within the space. The trees help our climate, but we want the space to be tree-filled, in a larger space, not just a more dense number of trees, because they may not even thrive, if there's already a really established canopy, anyway. So, that's a balance in the discussion. So, that was a lot, I appreciate staff hearing me out. Thank you. And my fellow councilmembers, thank you very much for all your efforts for tree preservation.
Thank you, Mayor. Running down the list and the messages, I think Councilmember Fender, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Chris, and I appreciate your presentation, it's a lot of good information here, and, as all of you guys know, I have been really pushing the tree preservation changes to the UDO, since I got on the council, so I'm very, very, very happy to be talking about this, this morning. I agree with a lot of what's been said by Councilmember Robati and Mayor Colley, I intend to, to address your bullet items here on this slide. I do think we need to prioritize the location of trees, I do not think it's enough, just to preserve the trees along the riparian buffers, they're required to do that anyway, and then they count those trees, they apply that percentage of trees to what they're required to preserve, and I would, I think they need to keep the trees in other locations, in addition to what they're already required to keep along the riparian buffer, we need to keep additional trees up closer to the road, otherwise, we do get what we see at the trailside apartment. I do prefer a natural look, like Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson said, more of forest or woods-type look is much better, and, you know, and that's what we're hearing from the public, you know, even though the developers were required to retain a certain percentage of those trees, like at the Myers Point, with them being all to the back, you still get the net effect of clear-cutting, and that is what we, we're getting, a lot of lowback from the public, with regards to that. So, I mean, clearly, what we have in our UDO now, is not working, and it may be working for the developers, but it's not working for those of us that need, that are living here. So, second bullet, the standards table, yes, I think this needs to be updated, I would prefer a flat percentage across the board, similar to what Mayor was saying, that, you know, and I did this calculation, if you have six percent, six percent of the trees, or, six percent of tree canopy on an existing parcel, and you're required to maintain twenty-one percent, you end up with one percent of tree canopy on your parcel. I don't think that is acceptable, I'd rather see a flat percentage across the board, I do agree with increasing it, increasing that percentage for your first and second column. I like Mayor TJ's suggestion of being bold, I guess, I'm not completely to that end of the spectrum, I'd rather see twenty-five percent and twenty percent across those two columns. Let me see, yes, I'd like to close loopholes, because particularly this trailside development, I saw, you know, I walked along through there, and I saw where the developers planted these trees along, I think it's called Town Hall Extension, through there, and half of them are dead now, so it does not look pretty through there, I know they planted trees, but it does not look good, so I'd like to close those loopholes. Oh, what else you got? I am in favor of retaining additional trees, as opposed to parks payment and lieu, I think we've gone to the extreme of using the parks payment and lieu, because we've got what we, you know, that's led to what we have now. Lastly, you know, I think this talk of the single-family detached housing designation, I think that's a distraction from this topic, given the amount of parcels that are left within the town, that are even possible to have single-family detached, you know, that is such a small percentage, unfortunately, that it's not, I don't think it needs to be part of the discussion at this point. I don't think there is this thought out there, that single-family detached is somehow gonna help us preserve trees, I think the argument for single-family detached is to prevent more apartments, and to also promote homeownership, and people, residents staying in the town. So, I think, even talking about a single-family detached, and what's required as far as trees, is a distraction at this time, and we need to be focused on increasing the percentage of retained trees in this table. And, I'd also like to see us benchmark against County Cary, and perhaps County Apex, and just see what the other municipalities close to us are doing. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let's see, Councilmember Garamilla?
Hey, Chris, I think, can you go back to the tabular column there, please? Yeah, I think, listening to all of my colleagues' comments, we, as a whole, are only setting up, you know, nineteen percent or ten percent, right? But, we are not, we are leaving that to the ability of the developer to pick where that percentage is, is that my right statement? You know, give us somewhere nineteen percent in column A, in a column, in a row one, and then you have been satisfying our rule, is that the way I treat it?
Generally, yes.
Okay, so, I agree, like, the riparian buffers, you know, is kind of undisturbed areas, they don't have, we had, I think, initially, we had fifty, hundred feet, I think the legislature changed it to fifty feet, on either sides, and also, the land, you know, between the edges and parcels... And also, um, the land, you know, between the edges and parcels is, you have to have those buffers, right? Like, I don't know, it's 15 feet, um, so, uh, 15, 15, 30 feet, I guess. So those be undisturbed, and like the setback areas in the front be undisturbed. And so if we can, um, indirectly, if we have that place in our UDO, uh, forget the tree preservation for a second, you're automatically, you know, saying the developer not to build on those areas and leave it undisturbed. And, and over and beyond, if we want, um, percentage, I'm not even going there, but if we want to split the percentage in like, say, 10, 9, that having whatever the council needs, like, have it in the front. So, that also gives them that they have to have X percentage of trees put on the front, or wherever, you know, depending on the site map, you know, like, uh, it, uh, they have to do it not just at one place, kind of a thing. So that, I'm just a thoughts, I'm just throwing out there. That's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Robati has commented too, but Council, or Mayor for Tim Johnson has commented one. I'm not sure who to direct that to.
I'll, I'll go next, Chris, thank you. We're trying to, we're trying to regulate ourselves, so we'll help you out here, so I'm next. So, a lot of good things have already been said. I'm going to repeat just a couple of them, but, um, I think you've gotten a lot of good feedback so far, and I'll try to add a couple of different ones. But, um, as far as, um, locations on the site where trees should be saved, um, absolutely, it should be around the site. There should be trees saved in the front, um, around the site. We should have some say over that. They, they shouldn't all be saved in, um, the back, like in one of the examples you gave. So, I'll, I'll just say that. Tree canopy being removed in lieu of new plantings, no. I, I would really like to preserve, um, as many of the large hardwoods that we can out there. Why we would lose existing tree canopy for new plantings, I, I don't know. So we need to, yeah, tighten that up. You know, saving the natural trees, um, absolutely, I'm in, in, in support of that. I will say, and I thought we had talked about this in the past, um, you know, I'm not in favor of saving pines, um, I'm talking hardwoods here. Pines seem to be a, a problem, so the type of tree kind of really does matter. So just want to make sure of that. There was a mention of no double dipping, I'm in favor of that, too. We do need to have standards and requirements that, um, developers, uh, need to be held accountable, but I also like the idea of incentivizing on top of that. And, and you don't have to answer this right now, but I thought, I thought in the code we did offer some, um, um, some ways to incentivize more tree preservation, or, and if that's not working, um, because it does seem like it's not working to me, you know, then, then I, I'd like to know why not, and let's, let's tighten that whole thing up. But, y, uh, again, standards and requirements, for sure, and incentivizing on top of that is good. Sorry, I'm looking through all my notes here. I do, uh, as far as prioritization, environmental protection, um, yes, I think that would, if I had to prioritize, um, I'd put that above some others. I like the natural look, I already think I already said that, versus the manicured look. I guess the last comment I'll make, um, I guess two comments, um, and again, don't have to answer this right now, but how are we enforcing this after the fact? I, I've, I've been very concerned about that, and I know that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about, um, you know, just, just, um, updating the tree preservation, um, portion of the UDO, but how, how we're making sure that what we've required upfront is really what we see down the road, and that, um, you know, the, the, the tree preservation or the, the trees that were supposed to be there continue, um, and so enforcement after the fact is important to me. And then the last thing I'm going to say is, um, examples are going to be really helpful as we go through this. The examples you gave us today, the visuals are really helpful, um, as we start getting into the real nitty-gritty and the details of, of how, um, our, our code is going to affect, you know, development on the ground. I think that's going to be, uh, critical. So I just would, um, ask you to keep that in mind as we're moving forward, but thank you, this has been very helpful.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll certainly give some examples, I think they are pretty helpful. Let's see, Councilmember Robati?
Yeah, so before, I wasn't talking about cotton plates, I was talking about brain bridge, thanks to all my fellow council members who texted me to ask if I was crazy. So, I wanted to say, uh, to Councilmember Fender's point, uh, another issue that people had with, um, with wanting, preferring multifamily was also, um, infrastructure, roads, schools. So I don't think that, I did not hear much about tree preservation in terms of single-family versus multifamily. That's not the discussion that I heard, so, um, I just wanted to throw that out there. Also, that infrastructure was key among, uh, people's objection to multifamily. And I think that's all that I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Garamella?
No, I, I think Liz has answered some of them, you know, like, uh, I know when my neighborhood was getting done, I had the same questions, when I asked the developer, why do they clearcut all pines? And they said they are, you know, together, you know, and, um, when they start, you know, cleaning it up, um, these huge trees become unstable and dangerous, and with the first storm, a lot of them will fall down. So, you know, I, you know, I think she has addressed that, and I think that we also need to be, um, aware of, because safety is also critical. And so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all the comments I see, I, I know we're over on time right now, um, but, but thank you so much for the feedback. I think I've got a lot of, of solid ideals on, on, you know, some text amendments to draft, and, you know, let our planning zoning board review, and, and ultimately, um, council review also. I have a second section to my presentation, not sure, uh, Town Manager Page, would you like to provide guidance?
I would, thank you, Chris, and thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have a suggestion for council to consider for the rest of their retreat weekend. Uh, we are really right at our break time now. Chris has another substantive, uh, discussion that may take you another hour, but also do not want to, um, not move and proceed into that affordable housing discussion that Emily has, and you may end up wanting to talk about that more than an hour as well. My suggestion is, is we have a work session scheduled for March 16th. Currently, the primary item on that work session agenda was about two hours to go over town center proposals. Without answering a lot of questions yet, and we can come back to that and wrap up, we will not be ready to have that discussion on March 16th. We, we just misjudged our ability to get those proposals reviewed, and to you with enough time for you to review. So I would like to propose that the rest of Chris's discussion be carried forward to March 16th, as well as Jeannie's revenue special topics discussion, then anything else that council wants to continue discussing from the retreat, as well as you may wish to hold your debrief for a couple weeks, so that you can think about that, and do that in your March 16th work session. You also already have some time left over for Town Council roundtable that could be continuation of your brainstorming, and Jeannie's going to be bringing back some of that bond referendum ballot information to review. So that would be my recommendation to, to go into your scheduled break for about 20 minutes, and then come back and allow Emily to introduce affordable housing. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, now seeing questions in chat, if we could give thumbs up onto that alternative plan as proposed by the Town Manager? I see a few thumbs up. Yep, okay, so we have consensus to go forward with that plan. Thank you, Town Manager, for helping us be agile and flexible.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson, uh, great presentation, lots of great feedback, lots of good discussion amongst the council members. I look forward to revisiting, maybe recapping again on March 16th, going over what you heard, and then, uh, starting into your next part of the presentation, which we're very much looking forward to, the parkland payment in lieu discussion that was touched on a little bit in this. So thank you, Mr. Lawson. At this time, my clock shows 10:32, why don't we go ahead and take a 20-minute break, and reconvene at 10:55, please? So, see you then. Remember, uh, turn off your camera, turn off your mic, we are continuing to be live. Remember, turn off your camera, turn off your mic. We are continuing to be live.
...really going to be affordable at somewhat higher AMI than what you can get with legally binding affordable housing, which could potentially serve folks who are at the lower end of the income spectrum. So, the town doesn't currently have any legally binding affordable housing. Legally binding affordable housing is generally required to be affordable at a certain AMI for a set number of years. We do have two projects kind of in the pipeline that will get up to 30 rental units affordable at 80% AMI for 15 years. Okay, so moving on to recommendations. The plan identified three recommendations for implementation. I'm going to give you a brief rundown of each of these options and the major questions I think you would need to consider if you're considering implementing each of them. And then, when we get to discussion, we can return to each of these individually if you want to spend more time with any of them. So, the first option is the Community Servant Housing Choice Program. This could include elements like down payment assistance, shared equity, rent assistance, could contribute to affordability of both rental and homeownership. You could consider implementing all of these programs as part of a choice program, or you could just look at one or more of them individually. Establishing a program like this would likely require hiring a consultant to figure out how to set up and administer a program like this long-term. So, there would be upfront costs in establishing a program and ongoing administrative and service costs. I think eligibility is the main question you'd need to consider with this option, particularly who would be considered a public servant. You would also need to consider which of the elements of the program you would want to offer and what level of assistance. The second recommendation is an affordability partnerships toolkit. This is a fairly broad-based recommendation, which could incorporate several different types of development incentives, master leases, land purchases, maybe funds for renovation and preservation, and a variety of other tools. Costs would vary considerably depending on which tools you wanted to include. Something like land purchases might involve substantial investment from the town, while development incentives may not cost the town much at all. We may need a consultant to help with this if you want to evaluate several options, or if you're looking at implementing some of the more complex tools. For instance, master leases, something along those lines, or very complex UDO amendments. Other things to consider with this option would be your preferences for various types of tools and incentives, what population you would want these tools to be used to target, and the levels of involvement you see the town having in long-term administration of affordable housing. Option three is an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The 2019 Affordable Housing Plan really envisions the town as a founding member of a regional Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It would incorporate funding from various municipalities and counties, and it would prioritize distribution of those funds to projects across the region. For the sake of organizing a discussion about affordable housing strategies, I think we can consider other types of direct sort of bulk financing options as part of this trust fund bucket. And maybe that's the town making a one-time contribution directly to a development project or contributing to a Wake County fund. So, I think those are all things we can consider as we kind of talk about a trust fund. The regional version of that is sort of one option. I think there are other ways to implement something similar. Some important things to consider with this option are, I think, primarily the level of investment and whether that's one-time investment or if that's ongoing. Also, how important to you is it that affordable housing funds are spent in Morrisville? For example, if you're contributing to a regional fund, there is not a guarantee that those dollars would be distributed back within the town versus if the town contributes directly to a project, then that we could guarantee that that's housing that's actually within Morrisville. Okay, so that's the end of my sort of structured presentation here. So, I think, I think just to say, to start the discussion, I would really like to hear from council members about what is, what's essentially your vision for affordable housing? When you talk about wanting to see some affordable housing in Morrisville, what does that mean to you in general? If there are certain of these strategies that stand out to you, that really appeal to you, that would be great to know. I think it's also helpful to hear kind of what your goals are, what population you want to serve, and then use that to kind of help staff direct your goals towards strategies that will achieve them. So, I think we can go ahead and jump into discussion. I have a couple of, or here's some key considerations to look at as we go through this. And I guess I will jump right in. I think it looks like Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson has the first comment.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're good. Thank you so much for being very focused and direct on both our situation and our options. I was recently in attendance of the Affordable Housing Overview by the Triangle J Council of Governments, and they had stated that Morrisville had 130,000 annual like AMI number, so it's even higher. And I had mixed feelings about that, looking at your presentation and looking at their assessment at 130,000, because what it does mean to me is that there is great disparity between the income levels of people that are just getting started in their careers or they're retiring, and we have a big gap there in the, I guess you'd say, target population. I'd like to think about younger adults starting out their lives. And I also think about, we're not using seniors as much, but active adults that have retired and starting a new chapter. As a council, we've talked a lot about the public servant program, and I think that is an important population that is getting missed in a lot of the Wake County scope because it's possibly working adults that just are above the criteria for assistance. And a town can maybe frame up a program that would look at the population that is in that gap, not quite at the AMI, but yet overqualified, if you will, to receive assistance in other programs. My favorite option is the toolkit, because I think we can include option number one within the toolkit. Number two, it allows us to create partnerships with Wake County. And I know that the Alta Apartments that you stated earlier in your presentation are a partnership with Wake County so that they are eligible for support there. The other project was a voluntary reduction in the rent, setting it at an 80% AMI rate. So, I would like to see some rental options, but the ownership piece is ultimately where you can generate wealth and ultimately help the affordable housing option. So, the partnership opportunities that come to mind is like, I hate to call out one partner versus another because there are so many good partners in Wake County, but the one that's easy to identify for a lot of individuals is Habitat for Humanity, where they're actually developing a home ownership program to help families, and it's deed-restricted properties, and it's collaborative in nature. And there's education for the families that live in those communities to help them understand the obligations and the opportunities that homeownership does provide. So, I would, I think option three, I'm not in favor of at all. I think we want to keep our monies and our investments in our town. If we put it into a general fund, we don't have control, and we wouldn't necessarily see any of those projects come back to our town. So, first choice is option two, the second is one. Target populations, there's three of them that I'm looking at right now. And if we could identify land that potentially we could partner with, you know, some of our partners, that would be great to develop a project. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. It looks like Councilmember Rao is next.
Yes, first of all, it's always hard to follow Vicky, Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, but I'm in favor of one and two, or a combination. And what I can say at a high level that I've decided is that it's going to require some level of investment by the town, because I think doing it the way we've been doing it, we have success with Wood Partners. I think we approved development, looking at where we can get some consensus of donating affordable housing units, but I think it's very hard for many developers to do that. So, I love this idea of a toolkit, giving us the ability to be flexible with partners. And so, I'd be curious as to what other council members think. But I'd like to see this year for us to make a decision and figure out how we move forward with a program to not only have an affordable housing policy, but a program. So, that's really my goal for this year. And in terms of the types of folks to focus on, I would say one of the new terms is workforce housing, would be first responders, our staff, you know, maybe a younger kind of demographic that's coming into Morrisville. It's very important for me to have options for veterans. I think there is a Veteran Home Assistance Initiative in Wake County, and I think any man or woman who's either listening to this stream or who lives in Morrisville or the region, anyone who serves their country should not have to be paying exorbitant fees to live somewhere. And many of the veterans coming back that I meet, even I meet during my office hours once a month, they're younger, and they're having to get back to school. They have post-traumatic stress disorder, and so I think we need to be really appealing, and that could be a unique niche. The final two things I'll say is that I'd be curious as to programs that we might be able to have. How would we, you know, for example, partner with Habitat for Humanity to identify maybe a developer could donate a parcel of land? And many of the council members, in fact, all of them, have come to some of the ones that Commissioner Jessica Holmes, former Wake County Chair, sponsored, and we went to different places. Could we get something like that in Morrisville or that bill? There's many veteran programs where we could have a specific thing. So, I think that's where the partnering comes in. And the final thing to me, I attended the core meeting with Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, and what was very, and Vicky, maybe we can send everyone the slide. I didn't want to lose my link on this one, but I remember, you know, a figure came in that said that 52% of many households, 52% of the income is paid on housing. So, I think it's also getting really opened up the eyes in that, you know, sometimes we have to, the biggest challenge is how do we define affordable housing? But I think we, as policymakers, can provide, especially during a pandemic and after a pandemic, ways where we can reduce the cost of ownership of owning a home, which I think is helpful. So, I'll just leave it at that, and I hope that's been helpful in providing you some direction.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Rao. It looks like I'm seeing Councilmember Robody next.
So, I think that we should narrow our focus to option two, especially considering that option one can be a component of option two, and that I don't think any of us really have the appetite for option three. First of all, I don't like the idea of affordable housing projects. I think that it's a much better model to intersperse affordable housing units into projects that are, that are not affordable housing currently. So, I think, yeah, so I think that the best, the best focus for us would be on option two. And I think that it said that that would require consultant assistance. I would be in favor of obtaining some consultant assistance with that to structure the program appropriately. I am in favor of, so target populations. I think it might be illegal to specify young people, but I'm certainly in favor of populations, veterans, who would be eligible for VA loans to purchase property that already have low interest rates. But if there's anything we can do to help a veteran, I'm generally in favor of. And I also think that Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson had a great idea about partnering with Habitat for Humanity. I think that that, I think that's a great idea. And I think that we could even do some micro projects with Habitat for Humanity. You know, places where we have enough room for three houses, you know, we have extra land, we, you know, on the side of some town project. We can partner with Habitat to build, you know, it doesn't have to be a 50, 50-unit. Affordable housing is part of a 250-unit. It can be just a micro project. So, yeah, so great to see that we're making some progress on this. I'm really excited. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm seeing the mayor next.
Thank you. A great presentation. So, we looked at this a while back, and I was very supportive of the public servant program, which is option number one, the idea of having our staff and also Wake County public school staff. I think that would be really nice to have more first responders and more of our staff living in town wherever possible. One of the options was down payment assistance, which I think of as essentially a revolving fund. So, deposit assistance for renters and down payment assistance for homeowners. I'm very supportive of anything that builds home and generational wealth. So, homeownership is really key, but if we can help renters in speaking to some Wake County school teachers. It's hard to live in Morrisville. I know that we do have some of our first responders living in Morrisville. I'd love that to be more. I remember growing up, and the principal of my elementary school just lived a few blocks from me. A lot of the teachers lived in the neighborhood. I think that that's really a great way to build community. The toolkit seems like more of a catch everything, so the servant program can be part of that, which I think is fine. I'd support master leases, which is essentially a subsidy. I think there might be more appetite right now to do the low-hanging fruit, which is the revolving fund. I think that might be easier to message to our residents that it's more of a handoff, and this is money that we will be getting back, but does help the community and build the community. I would be open to partnering with Wake County. I know that they're actively trying to identify parcels of land in different municipalities. So, it's my understanding that if we help with that, I'd want to make sure that all our funds are directed to Morrisville projects. So, I'm not looking to put something into a regional fund, which we may or may not get some of the money back, like the hotel motel tax. So, I think, given our limited resources, I think it's important to really serve our residents. And when you talk about AMI, it's affordable to whom? We have already self-selected a very much higher demographic financially. So, if there's more people that we think would be benefit from living in town, like our Wake County school teachers, like our staff and veterans. I would also support veterans, obviously. We need to provide a little bit more options, because those people would live here if they could, but they can't. So, they're not really in our, they're in our lens, but we can't identify them. They're, they're not part of this yet, but we'd like them to be. So, if you have any other questions, we can circle back for a second round, I think. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. I'm really looking forward to trying to get something going. And for the initial financial investment, if I recall, the deposit and down payments would take about $100,000 to get started. I'd be interested in supporting that in this year's budget and as an ongoing appropriation going forward. Because having a plan on a shelf is important. It makes it ready to go. I think it's, we need to put some funding and some resources behind this in order to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just brought up this slide here to sort of just give a visual to what you were saying about the area median income. The area median income for, so Morrisville falls within the Raleigh metropolitan district area, and it is a fairly high median income. So, when we do look at something like, when we say affordable at 80% AMI, the, this bottom row here is the, the family income that we're looking at in terms of who we would be targeting for affordability. And then, you know, there's also 50% and extremely low income is looking at kind of lower AMI. So, that's something to think about. But of course, there are, like the mayor mentioned, with the community servant programs, there are other ways of kind of looking at how we're targeting affordable housing that is not just AMI. But I do think this is kind of helpful for context on that. So, I'm going to bring back our key considerations. And then, it looks like Councilmember Garamella had a comment next.
Thanks, Emily. Can you tell me what target populations mean?
Yeah, so I think that, for me, that's a pretty broad question in the sense of this discussion. I'm really interested in hearing from council. Basically, when you say that you'd like to see some affordable housing in Morrisville, are we talking about, I think-
Yeah, okay, I don't know. So, let me ask a different way. You know, like, is workforce housing considered as a target population?
I would, yeah, I would say yes. When you say, assuming that when you say workforce housing, you're referring to housing that is at about eight, maybe 80% to 100% AMI. I would consider that a target population within the range of area median income.
And then, would I, you know, consider target population as Wake County, you know, staff, like including schools? And I liked what Courtney Tanner said before, you know, when we had this presentation initially brought up. I think, correct me, Michelle, her stats were outstanding that, I don't know, the percentage, it's more than 50% of our town staff does not qualify for, you know, living in Morrisville as part of the AMI or something. And is that, can, Michelle, do you remember those numbers? Or sorry, Emily, if you do.
Yeah, I remember the conversation. I do not remember the specific numbers that went along with that. We do have a very small number of staff that live into town, that live in town right now. I would say, you know, when staff are making choices as to where to live, you know, some of the things that do play into that are kind of where they are in their stage of life, with family, kids. I will tell you, because anecdotally, a lot of our younger staff are in Raleigh-Durham, where there are a lot of activities and amenities very close by. Others, you know, moving kids from one school district to another, once they're already ingrained. Those types of factors come in as concerns as well.
No, this was more in terms of the salary. I think Courtney worked with HR and then came back, okay, you know, how many of our staff would be eligible? So, that if you can bring back a later time, I'm fine. But for me, like, you know, is that a targeted population, Emily? Because I know UNC or Duke, I talked to Triangle Cog last year, they're doing a university tower project, which is dedicated to the college students who live in the campus to get affordable living, you know? So, I've considered that as one target population. So, if the teachers and the Wake County staff, the firefighters and the police, I take them as a target population. And I think people have done that successfully all across different towns, and I am willing to do that too, because target population is not based on racial distinction. It is like, for me, it is more about the set of people. Like, you know, as TJ said, I would like to have our principals stay here. I would like the teachers to stay here, you know? So, to have that, I'm totally fine with it, because that actually lives, gives us the sense of inclusiveness. Because when I was door knocking, and it was good to door knock one of the Marshall Police Officer's house, you know, during election and say, hey, you live here, you know? So, that way, I think if we can promote the people who live here and kind of create a sense of workforce housing, I would be all for it. That's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. I think that's all helpful to know. And if you are interested in seeing more information about kind of the, just the cost of housing compared to staff salaries, that's definitely, I think, data that I could pull together. So I'm seeing Councilmember Fender next.
Yes, just wondering whether Michelle needs to go before me?
Um, thank you, Councilmember Fender. Just, you know, in kind of the flow of conversation, if you don't mind. I heard a couple things about workforce housing. Councilmember Garamella just brought that up. I think it also came up in Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson's comments, that that is an area you want to target, you know, absolutely, we could look at doing that. Your partnership opportunities with Wake County are probably less there. So if that's a direction that you decide to head, you're probably looking at more administrative, long-term costs at the staff level for that one. And thank you, Councilmember Fender.
All right, thank you, Michelle. So I'm leaning more in favor of option one, the public servant program. I think this addresses the workforce housing. And I like the idea of homeownership, prioritizing homeownership, just for these individuals to be able to build equity. I think that's pretty important. You know, I bought, was able to purchase my first house when I was 25, with no assistance from my parents or anything, minimum down payment. And so I think it makes a huge difference. So I am in favor of like down payment assistance, shared equity, like Mayor TJ's talking about, the revolving door, shared equity. I think that's a really good idea. Definitely not in favor of option three. I want our money to stay in Morrisville. I'd be interested in hearing more about how option one fits into option two. Although, we'll see, you know, I would like to prioritize homeownership for our first responders and other public servants, you know, with maybe some smattering of hope with apartments. And lastly, I, I'm in favor of partnering with organizations like Habitat Humanity. I know, and some people, but some people, they get a bad rap. I really don't quite understand that. Shortly before I moved down here, the subdivision where I lived in Wisconsin, we had one Habitat for Humanity house with, just down the road from me. And, you know, I think that is a perfectly acceptable option for us. So thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm seeing Mayor Protem Johnson.
Thank you, Emily. This is really helpful. Can I ask Michelle, though, the comment you just made, Michelle, can you, I'm not sure I under, could, tell me what you, say it again?
I guess I'll say it again more directly. Before looking at establishing some sort of a public servant program, you know, we could look to work with a consultant to get something set up this year. But there will be ongoing administrative costs to administer that program. So you are likely looking at needing to eventually hire an additional staff person. And I just want to make sure that that is out there as part of this discussion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so I'm gonna, Councilmember Fender and I are kind of on the same wavelength. I am, I'm supportive of the public servant program with prioritizing our employees. This option offers both rental assistance as well as that down payment assistance, which is really important to help folks get into their first home if they need it. I'm, again, behind all that. I'm looking at your questions on the back. So I'm good with that. I'm not in favor of option three, like we've heard, so that, we kind of killed that one. And then option two, as far as a toolkit, I am, when I look at the, I'm not sure what that means. So I'm not really in favor because I have too many questions about that. You know, one of the, one of the questions you have, Emily, you talk about, you know, how much involvement do you want the town have in managing affordable housing? Well, I would say none. I would ra, I don't think we have the expertise to do that. I would rather partner with others to make that happen. So if that means partnering with Wake County to some degree, and if that falls into this toolkit options, well, yeah, I'm in favor of some of it. I'm also in favor of offering incentives to development to encourage them to offer affordable housing within their developments. So maybe I'm sort of, kind of in favor of the toolkit option, but I, not all of these options. So, and then a couple other really quick comments. We already do have some Habitat for Humanity homes in Morrisville. I was fortunate to be able to help on those builds probably more than 10 years ago. And so, you know, if the toolkit option means, you know, we're amenable to Habitat for Humanity coming into town and working with them, that would be a yes for me. We already do have apartment complexes in town that work with our employees and offer assistance for rental units. So I'm in favor of making sure that that is known and making sure that that, those opportunities continue for our employees. And then as far as target audiences, and I already said, I favor the public servants for sure, our employees first, for sure. And then, you know, expanding that out as we roll these programs out and as we get a better handle and have more experience on what this all means. And of course, you know, so that means vets and seniors, you know? I think that's to come, maybe. So I think those are all my notes I have now, but thank you, Emily.
Thank you. I think, I'm not seeing that anyone else has kind of a first round of comments about this. So far, I'm hearing that there is a good amount of appetite for some kind of community servant program, potentially incorporating some toolkit options, maybe not the toolkit exactly as the plan kind of describes it, but including some of those options in there. Not so much an appetite for any kind of regional trust fund, so I think, just, I haven't heard from any council members that that is of interest to anyone. So I think I could sort of table that one for now and start looking more at the other two. I think because we've heard a lot about the public servant program, I think it would be helpful to kind of return to some of those specific questions. If we are talking about doing some kind of public servant program, would you be interested in kind of offering all three things that the, that the plan mentions in terms of including in a kind of a public servant housing choice program? Also, would like to spend a little time talking about who is a public servant for the purposes of this plan, if you really want to focus on town staff, that's, or a public servant more broadly defined, maybe including Wake County. And then I think some of this we can come back to in terms of the other considerations. We may need a consultant to kind of help set this up and figure out how to administer a program like this. I do wonder if council would be interested, I said I could do something in terms of getting some information about kind of staff salaries and the cost of housing in Morrisville. Would you maybe also be interested in, I'm wondering if we could do kind of a survey of staff to see if there's kind of an appetite for a program like this? Or what options maybe staff thinks they might utilize? Find out maybe how many staff currently live in town? If council is interested in that, I think that's maybe something we could pull together as well. So I guess I'll turn it back to you to spend a little bit more time on this. Also, would like to talk about the toolkit a little more. I'm not sure if we'll have a lot of time for that, but I think we can, can start here talking about this a little more. And I will turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you. I think focusing on the community servant is a good idea right now. And I also want to mention that Habitat has been mentioned by everyone. I also support that. So I think for the three things, the down payment assistance and the shared equity, I think that those are a really good place to start right off the bat. I'm not sure how much appetite our community might have for actual rent assistance. That's why I'm a little bit leery of the master leases as well. Any kind of subsidy right now might make it harder to get the program off the ground. I think right now we just need to show some commitment and get something on the ground. So I think the first two are an easier lift than actual subsidies, because these are more revolving funds, money that we're investing and will be getting back. I think it's a great idea to survey the town staff and whoever wants to respond about what has kept them from living in Morrisville, what it would take to have them live in Morrisville, how close they would be to doing that. I'd also like to expand that a little bit more into Wake County teachers. So when you talk about community servants, I think of all of our staff, including first responders and all of our staff, but then Wake County Public School employees rather than all Wake County employees. All Wake County employees are very important, but I think it's the schools and the people who work in the schools have more visibility and help build community more as a starting point, as was mentioned by Mayor Protem. Let's start a little smaller and then grow it as we get acceptance and we get our feet under us. It's my understanding for Alto Morrisville, et cetera, we are already on the hook to track some of these things to make sure that they're being compliant. We're already doing that in-house. I would support having a staff member as we expand this program, working on this and getting, developing that expertise. We're going to need that over time, so if we can get that going right away instead of having to go through a consultant. I think the consultant, last time, if they had provided some basic guidelines, that would have been nice, so we can get things started right away rather than just giving us something on the shelf that we have to pay more to actually utilize. So I think that addresses most of your questions. If I missed anything, just prompt me and I'll do comment three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem Johnson?
Sorry, Emily, I haven't, I hit it like five times, but anyhow. Just a couple of, a few more comments. When we, when, your suggestion about surveying staff is dead on. When we, when we set up these programs to help a group of people, we need to talk to that group of people to find out what works for them and not assume we know what works. So I appreciate that. Thank you for that suggestion. I think that's critically important to know, you know, would anybody even want to live here? Our staff may, you know, want to live, like I know some folks do, you know, 45 minutes away because they can purchase, you know, a larger piece of property and afford more. And, you know, so we all make choices in life. And so, so thank you for that. Surveying would be really important. And then the other thing is just a, and I don't want my comments to be misunderstood by anybody, and especially the public. I think the work that we do here and the regulations and the requirements through our UDO are critically important. But I think it's also important to remember, the more regulations and requirements we put on development, the more expensive it is to develop, and therefore the more expensive it is to rent the properties, if it, you know, if it's a rental, or to sell the townhouses or the single-family homes, if that's what the development is. So, you know, it's like a double-edged sword. We want more and better quality and we require more standards, again, which are, I'm not opposed to, those are important, but I think we have to understand, you know, the pros and the cons of doing that. We ourselves make things more expensive to those that want to live here. And we therefore exclude those that can't afford to live here. And then, and then we turn around and take taxpayers' money to help them live. So it's this, and I'm not saying any of this is good, bad, or indifferent. It is what it is, but I think we need to be conscious of it. And so that's just my overall arching comment. Thank you.
It looks like Councilmember Reamber Robody?
Thank you, Emily. You know, I had some comments, but that's actually a really interesting point that Mayor Protem just brought up. I don't know what to do about that, but I think that we should put that in the parking lot and have a discussion at a later time about, you know, how UDO changes are driving up the cost of development and the rents and the mortgages as a result of that, and I, you know, and things we could do to mitigate that. I think that's a parking lot item for sure. So I wouldn't be in favor of rent assistance. I don't like the way that sounds. I would be okay with deposit assistance for renters, but I'm not in favor, to me, rent assistance implies helping someone pay their rent. And I think that that is, that crosses the boundary from giving someone a hand up to giving someone a hand out. And I, so that's not something, I don't know if it's a wording thing or what's necessarily meant by that, but I don't think we should provide rent assistance, although I would be fine with deposit assistance, security deposit assistance or whatever. I would like to narrow the vision of who is a public service professional. So obviously, all town of Morrisville employees. But I think that rather than Wake County teachers, I think that we should restrict that, at least at first, to teachers or, teachers or staff or whoever that teach in schools that Morrisville kids at least go to. You know, I, I mean, those are the professionals that are serving Morrisville kids. And I don't think we should restrict it to Wake County either. I mean, there are kids in Morrisville going to Durham schools, and I think that people from those schools should be eligible also. And public service professionals, nonprofit employees or nurses, I think would be a phase two or phase three. But I think the more we can narrow the program scope in the beginning, the more successful it's likely to be. And I would be guided by the advice of experts on anything in that third bullet, income eligibility level of assistance, structuring and administering the program. I think we are going to have to seek some advice on that. Also, yes, please survey the staff. If they don't want this, it's a nonstarter to me. So, yes, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, I like the idea of the survey. I think that's important. I, I am in favor of this option as a place to start. And similar to what the mayor is suggesting, is I think it would be good just to focus on the down payment assessment and assistance and the shared equity first. And then with the same strategy, who is eligible? Let's start with the town of Morrisville employees, focus there before expanding it You know, this is, this is going to be a long-term program and a long-term investment. And I don't want to, you know... don't want to, you know, I think we can narrow down our focus to get it out the door rather than adding so many options and get bogged down with all the logistics. I think we just need to keep it simple from the beginning. I am a little bit concerned with what Michelle brought up about the administration costs and the potential to need another staff person just to administer this program. I don't know what to do about that, but I am concerned about that. If, I'd like to see if there's a way that that would not be necessary. So that's my thoughts right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Skargans Johnson?
Thank you. My interpretation of needing a consultant is twofold. First is our planning staff, if it comes from a planning department area. They're at full capacity right now. They have a lot going on in their workload, and a consultant would be able to develop the program and administer it for a temporary amount of time. They would have the right expertise and so forth like that. And then it would also alleviate the current staff from taking their time away from the other duties that we have that are really, like, probably over capacity. The rent assistance that some of the council members object to is a way to lower a barrier for people to live in the community that they work and serve. It's not necessarily a handout. If it would be amenable to the town council, we could put a time kind of dependency, like two years, you could be eligible for rent subsidy and so forth. The Alta apartments do have the subsidy based on the amount of income that they bring in, and if the family or individual exceeds the amount of income that is at a cap, then they would no longer receive that subsidy. So rent assistance sometimes helps you get in and lowers a barrier for that community so that you can find a location and maybe opt in for home ownership, or there would be another job opportunity that would take you into a different direction and eligible for a different kind of program. So I think that eliminating rent assistance out of the gate is not really helping us lower barriers for our potential residents, but restricting the amount of time might be a way of kind of getting that middle ground. The target population, I know that teachers are underpaid in North Carolina. We are probably at 48th out of 50 in the amount of pay that we have our teachers, so it is embarrassingly low. I would like to expand that category, not just teachers, but teacher assistants and the staff in the schools that they, that we have our Morrisville families attend as well. All of them together work very hard to educate our students, and I think that it's important that we recognize that. Of course, the Morrisville staff, if indeed they are interested, would be part of that same population. One of the things I really liked about council, or Mayor Protem Johnson's comments was about we are our own worst enemy when it comes to having a high-quality product and then we have an even higher price that's associated with that in order to make that a feasible project. If there are like incentives or points or something that we can have with some of our developers to include affordable elements within their project, that might create a naturally occurring affordability over time. Instead of just subsidizing with down payments or with rent, that will build that affordability factor into our town across various areas, and that's where the U D O amendments come into play. So I think that is all my comments for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ralph?
Yeah, I'm not purposely putting my comments after Vicki, but you brought up a lot of points I was going to make. So I agree, I think we should keep the rent assistance in there as an option, maybe the middle ground is a good idea. And I agree with a lot of the comments were made today. One thing that I want Emily to know is that as we define long-term this affordable housing plan and program for Morrisville, what's the mix of the type of development? Because we just adopted a land use plan. I know that there's been some pushback of, you know, multifamily, and I just think that, I just want to know, can this affordable component be a mix of median density, multifamily, or is the reality that it's more of a multifamily type of product? Or, you know, I just, and you don't have to answer today, but I think coming back to the council with what, you know, what that would look like, I think would be very helpful as we execute our land use plan. You know, we heard from Brad West today about the TOD and the McCrimmon Subarea. You know, obviously, maybe that's a good place in the town to have more of an affordable housing component, close to the transit, which I think other cities in North Carolina like Charlotte and others have had success, I think with them. I'm not sure if they have or not. I don't know, because uptown is pretty expensive. So that, you know, to me would be something to look at if you could look at from a big-picture perspective as we look at executing our land use plan and so that, so that we as a council and citizens know that that could be a factor, you know, to have an affordable housing in Morrisville. So that's really all I have. I just wanted to get your feedback on that issue.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. I'm not sure I have specific feedback right now on kind of what sort of affordable housing product we could be looking at and how that would relate to the land use plan. However, I think in terms of the community servant program, that doesn't necessarily contribute to new development at all. I mean, it could potentially be contributing to staff or other community servants being able to afford sort of what's existing. I do think there are some opportunities with, we haven't spent as much time on this this morning, but I think we can definitely come back to it at another time. Some of this, looking at the toolkit, particularly maybe some of the options like master leases are of less interest to council, but something like development incentives, I think kind of gets at what a couple of folks have brought up about, just sort of wanting to make sure that our own regulations aren't really driving up the cost of housing in Morrisville. I think there are probably ways we can look at development incentives. For instance, you know, if a certain number of affordable units are included, then developers are able to waive certain other requirements or reduce certain other requirements in order to facilitate, you know, a certain percentage of affordable housing coming in. I do think that there are opportunities to incorporate that into maybe the TOD or other specific areas if you wanted to add kind of some of those incentives specifically in certain areas of town versus having these development incentives that apply across the board. I think there would be ways to specify that as we go through our U D O and kind of attach those to certain districts.
Yeah, okay, great. And I guess what I'm trying to say, and I think what I was trying to say was that as we do do new development, what are those options for making sure that we look at it as an opportunity for workforce housing, affordable housing, right? And so, because I think that's going to affect, right now, we know that within the TOD in the subarea, we're going to have multifamily. The town center would require some density. Where is the best place in town to have that so that, you know, we can sort of look and say, okay, as we look at Morrisville five, 10 years out? You know, because I think that affordable housing component could also be good for many, many of the people that are working in Morrisville. You know, these companies are growing in the pharma, the tech space, and we want to be able to have, I think, good affordable housing that they can work here, they can live here and work here. So rather than say, well, I can't afford half of Morrisville, I'm going to go live somewhere else. I want both. I want a twofer. I want them to work here. Well, actually, I want a threefer. I want them to work here, I want them to live here, and I want them to go to restaurants and eat and score businesses and increase our tax base and play at a once. So we can get all three, but how does affordable housing fit into that? So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. It looks like I'm right at my time right now. If anyone else has kind of sort of brief additional comments or questions you want to throw out, that would be fine. Otherwise, I think I definitely have some information that I can take back and kind of, at least kind of set up the next steps here in terms of figuring out with the community servant program what you would be, what staff might have an appetite for, and I can look a little bit more about what you've said in terms of the toolkit and see kind of where to go from there, especially in looking at kind of how to leverage new development for affordable housing, how to incorporate some incentives maybe in certain targeted parts of town. So, if anyone has kind of something you want to mention right now?
Emily, I'll just kind of say as an aside that I find the conversation about the cost of development as it relates to, you know, development requirements just very interesting. A handful of us were fortunate to go to the National APA Conference in San Francisco a couple of years ago. And I'll tell you, the first couple sessions I went to, when I heard about some of their kind of unique impact fees, you're originally thinking, oh, you know, that's kind of neat. But as you sat in more and more sessions and then one at the very end, it very much started to tell a story about how all the regulations and all the fees, school impact fees, public, you know, outdoor recreation fees, affordable housing, were driving up the market rates there. And as you know, San Francisco is not the city it used to be, and it has a huge homelessness problem. And, you know, it just, you know, I think it's a huge lesson learned that if out the gate you are starting with a really high number because of all the regulations that you're piling on, that has, you know, sometimes very significant consequences as well. Well-meaning regulations can sometimes, when piled on top of each other, ultimately have the opposite effect. So just find that conversation interesting.
Thanks, Michelle.
It appears that we're kind of wrapped on this subject. I see a head nod from Ms. Langston. Ms. Langston and Ms. Deagle, thank you so much for bringing this forth once again. This is a very important topic for our entire council and our town, so this has been a really great conversation. So thank you very much for all your time and efforts.
Sure, thank you, Mayor.
I see a lot of the council is applauding in the background. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robbadi for one more thing.
Yeah, sorry about that. I just wanted to say that if, I would appreciate any insight that staff could provide about ways, about changes that we could make to the U D O that would not affect necessarily things that we've identified as very important to us, but there may be changes to existing regulations that we could make that wouldn't really make any difference in how the prospective development would look, but might be, anyway, might be advantageous in keeping the development costs down. So I would be interested in that. That's all I have. Thank you. Sorry, everybody.
Yeah, we as a group and as a staff has a good relationship with Triangle Community Coalition, who advocate on behalf of development and community to try to find the balance. So I think that's a great thing that we've developed over the years, and we have coffee chats with them as well. Okay, at this time, as mentioned, we are pretty much on time. I'd like to pass to Town Manager Page for a little recap, debrief. Soon after we'll adjourn. We'll also have some time for each council member to share their thoughts about the retreat before we adjourn. So Town Manager Page.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the first thing I'd like to say on behalf of staff is thank you so much for the engaged, thoughtful, and deliberate discussion over these past three days. I think it has been, again, another really, really good retreat that has helped advance the things that staff is working on and that are important to you. So I really just want to express that on behalf of all of staff, especially in this more unique environment. Just to recap, the changes that we've made to the agenda and how those things will come back forward to you. The March 16th work session is currently on your calendars. I'll turn it over to Brandon after my comments to talk about how you might want to go about doing that as well as March meetings. But I'm going to talk about the content. We are going to move the Town Center RFP discussion to April. Let Brandon and I work on timing of that, and as we start pulling together our next quarter of rolling calendar items, we'll be able to do that. We will not unduly delay that, but do appreciate needing more time. You have on your March 16th rolling calendar agenda already a follow-up that would come from Jeannie on the rolling, the bond referendum ballot language. Again, you will hear from our financial advisors on March 9th, based on some of the input you provided to us this week, and then that March 16th discussion will be a continuation of that. In addition, she will bring the revenue special topics discussion that we did not cover yesterday. We will also hear from Chris Lawson again to just any follow-up you have on the tree preservation that you talked about today, but the introduction of the Parkland, P I L, versus Parkland dedication discussion. We will also leave some time for additional debrief of the retreat after you've had some introspective time to think about what you liked, what you may want to do differently next time, and brainstorming around table for any of the time that we would have left in that three-hour discussion. I think I've captured everything that we adjusted, and planning staff will be available for any of those other topics. Again, my thanks, and I'm going to turn it over to Brandon.
Thank you, Martha. So mayor and members of council, as you're aware, the governor has issued a new executive order, 195, this week that has relaxed some restrictions. It has taken back the safer-at-home prescription and removed the curfew. It has addressed some requirements related to business that are, I won't get into, they're not relevant to our discussion here about council meetings. Do want to touch base with you on handling the March, two council meetings, one work session, and then that decision would in all likelihood make a decision for how P Z B would meet in March as well. As you know, we've been all virtual, so the governor's order does lift the 10-person indoor mass gathering limit up to 25, has also lifted the outdoor up to 50. So we do have the potential to return to some hybrid meetings. I think much like we are seeing with our own staff, with your council, there is still some concern and some apprehension related to the pandemic and related to not yet having vaccinations. So unless I'm reading it wrong, I do not believe we would have an all-in-person meeting in March, but would be interested in your feedback in terms of whether you would consider staying virtual, which I think you would agree we certainly can do. We have demonstrated the ability to that. There are pros and cons to that. At the same time, I think everyone would acknowledge there are pros and cons to the hybrid approach. So I don't think there's any clear, you know, appropriate or right choice. It may be more about your comfort level. If you return to hybrid, that would, I would assume, given where we were, include the ability for persons to have in-person public comment and/or, when appropriate, in-person public hearing comment as well. So I'll stop there and see what your thoughts may be. And Mayor, I don't know if you want me to drive this portion or if you'd like to do that with comments.
I can facilitate at this point. Councilmember Ralph?
Well, I mean, my question is for Mayor Colley and the council, but starting with the mayor. I mean, I'm, you know, for me... I mean, I'm, you know, for me, I feel like it's easier to have all of the council together in a meeting, even though I don't like virtual very much, than the hybrid. But I'd be curious, from the mayor's perspective, is it, do you prefer, and I'm just asking you because you're the one that runs the meeting, is it easier for you to do it all virtual, or do you prefer the hybrid? What do you think? And I, you know, because for me, sometimes the hybrid can become a bit challenging, having to put the placards up and see who's speaking, whereas you can just see in the chat. So you've done both, so what do you?
Yeah, I was going to comment after the Mayor Pro Tem, but happy to answer that it's actually gotten to the point where it's probably easier to facilitate a meeting all virtual.
Okay.
Without having the mix back and forth. I'd also add my opinion that in order to model the, just because we're allowed to meet in person, doesn't mean that it's necessarily the behavior we want to model. So I'd be in favor of at least the first meeting continuing to be virtual. We're heading in the right direction in North Carolina and in Morrisville in particular. But I don't feel the rush that the benefit of having some people in person overrides the safety and perceptions as us, as leaders. So I hope that answers your question. I'm sorry that I skipped the line a little bit. I was going to comment after the Mayor Pro Tem. Do you want to share your thoughts, and then I'll recognize Mayor Pro Tem?
No, I just think based on feedback I'm getting from some healthcare professionals in my family, I think that, you know, that it's just, what I've been hearing is that it's, and I live with one of them, that it's safer to not get out there until we're vaccinated because of the mutations. And so it's just, you know, I agree with you. I think it's better to, just because we can do something, you know, it doesn't mean that we should do it. So I'm fine with remaining virtual, at least for, you know, until we see the numbers and everyone gets vaccinated, then it might be a different situation. So, thank you.
Thank you. I said I'd recognize Mayor Pro Tem next, but I'm going to recognize Assistant Manager Zudima, and then go through the comments in order after that, please. Assistant Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize for interrupting the council members, but two things. One, would encourage you to consider a decision for March so that we have some consistency through the month, and we can put out messaging sort of how we'll handle that. Also, would ask you, depending on what you decide, to also consider how you'd like to handle public comment and particularly public hearing comment, should those come up during the month. Right now, the executive order goes until the 26th, so we don't particularly expect any change in the guidance we're being given until the end of the month. Thank you.
Okay. Great point. So I'd support virtual for all of the month for consistency. Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, please.
So, you know, I've been one who has gone into council as soon as we were able. So I have always been in the council chambers when, during the pandemic, when some of us were able. I think we've done a really good job of handling this virtual world, so, and I agree with Brandon, this needs to be a month-by-month decision. So I suggest that we continue with all virtual through the month of March. We, as elected officials, will be able to sign up for vaccinations beginning on March 10th, and so that gives me great comfort. That doesn't mean we're all going to get vaccinated on March 10th, but hopefully we'll get in line, and then maybe, you know, in time, we can all be together again. So my suggestion is that we go all virtual for March, and that we take this on a month-by-month basis.
Sorry, I forgot that I'm facilitating here. Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, I, I mean, my first choice would be to go back to the hybrid version, as long as we're following CDC guidelines. You know, I make conference calls all day, so if I can meet people in person, I prefer that. I miss seeing all of you guys. However, I do see the benefit of staying virtual through March with the hope that we can be either all in person in April or our hybrid in April. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robotti?
I'm fine with all virtual through March, and I would welcome some guidance from staff on whether, once we're all vaccinated, can we go back to regular council meetings the way that we used to have, or should we still continue the, should we still continue with hybrid meetings after that if we don't stay virtual? Thank you.
Okay. I'll let the staff address that at the end. Councilmember Caramella, please.
I think I agree. There are two things in my mind, you know. I think getting, we are eligible, as Liz said, March 10th, but again, like, depends on the type of vaccine we get. You have four weeks in a gap. Pfizer is three, and Moderna is four, and then you need two weeks after that to be completely good. So I think March, April, you know, virtual would be good, and then come back to, you know, to sessions. But also had a question for staff, is it's not just about selfishly talking about our, we, the council, getting vaccinated. I wanted to see what the town's, you know, stand is. Are the town staff getting vaccinated? Because I was talking yesterday to one of the Johnson County Commissioners, their entire staff got vaccinated last week. So I wanted to know, I know Martha said they have taken a stand not to get it, but I would like to know if that is going to change pretty soon.
Let me, let me clarify that, Councilmember Caramella, if I may, before, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson speaks. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Yes, so you're saying head nod?
So staff, staff has not taken a stand about vaccines other than we have not mandated vaccines. We have certainly encouraged employees to do everything that they can to consider that, but they have, it's a personal choice for our staff. At this point, most of the staff that has been eligible has been, of course, are fire and first responders as the additional groups open up. I think we have receptive staff members, but we have not required that of our staff.
You know, I totally get it. What I mean to say is that there will be people, like even the council, they don't want to take vaccines, it's a choice for them, but is the town, you know, like, from your point of view, are they eligible March 10, too, to go take vaccine? Or are they, like, you're categorizing them as non-essential, that you don't have to take it? That's where my question was.
Thank you for that clarification. I think that's also one that, depending on who you speak to, I myself do not consider myself an essential worker in the frame as which it's sometimes illustrated, whereas others may consider a town manager and others essential workers. I think I would support the grouping and, I'll say, waiting. My turn is my personal example.
In my professional opinion, you are essential, so that's, and plus, if you come to office, yes, you are essential. That's how, all right, anyway. Thanks, Martha.
Thank you.
That's a head nod, that affirmation.
And I would just like, like to say, we have, we, as a whole of town of Morrisville employees, our, and it's not just our employees, it's the success of our community. We, we have, we have not had to deal with excessive non-compliance. We probably have some forgetfulness sometimes, but we, our employees and our community is observing the things we need to do to keep our community safe, and that makes it exceptionally easy for us to, to continue the compliance here within our own organization.
That is a wonderful point. Thank you for sharing, Town Manager Page. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo many of the comments that Councilmember Caramella said about, I think that the town staff are essential, and a lot of their work does work with the public. So public works comes to mind, there's other departments. So I hope that if someone from the staff wants to be considered to be vaccinated in that grouping starting March 10th, that they would not receive any sort of barrier, that they would be able to obtain that, you know, vaccine in, as soon as possible. Some might consider themselves a little more, less public-facing, I understand that, but if someone does feel the need, I think we should, as a town, support that. For March, I think it would be best if we did go with all virtual, just for consistency. I was a little skeptical about going virtual for the retreat. I was thinking maybe we should delay if we could, and, you know, just because it's very hard to interact. But once we started the meeting and then we went into this all-together mode, I can see people's faces, and it gives you visual clues. It was a success for me. I think it turned out so much better than I ever could have imagined. So I'm very comfortable with March. Most likely, a lot of us will be able to obtain a vaccine within the month of March. There is a huge waitlist still in Wake County, as we know, and just depending on your flexibility, your waitlist, your opportunity, it's like, I hate to say this, it's like the Hunger Games. I mean, how do we really successfully get the vaccine? There's no clear direction, and there's no one way you can do it. So I think this will start to get ironed out a little bit, but in the March, month of March, it's still very uncertain how all that's going to proceed. April, we more than likely could entertain hybrid, but I would ask if we could do the work session virtual, just because we've been doing our work sessions virtual over time, and I think that's worked. But for the council meetings themselves, you know, we can make a decision near the end of March about the April town council meetings and what format that may take. So, thank you.
Thank you. Because there's a couple of comments in chat, I want to give those council members an opportunity to say them out loud for the audience. Councilmember Rowe?
Mayor, I have no comment on this issue. I guess my comments will be when we all close out. I'll just ask for a misunderstanding.
Oh, I think, I was just recognizing you mentioned all virtual for March for consistency. That's your finding of that?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Councilmember Robotti?
Uh, sorry, no, Mayor, me neither.
Okay. All virtual through March, according to your chat, that's fine. I recognize Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, please.
So I want, thanks Satish for bringing up the staff. I really appreciate that. So Martha, if you, or Brandon, could you weigh in? Are you, you are, we're talking about our meetings for the month of March, but as far as staff goes, are you still not requiring folks to come into the office? Are you going to do status quo, or how are you handling that? Because I want to make sure our staff is comfortable, too, and, and safe and healthy.
Yeah, I'm going to pass right to Brandon on that. He's already been surveying staff.
So Mayor Pro Tem, we had a department head meeting this past Thursday, which conveniently was right the day after the most recent announcement from the Governor's office. So we have asked our department heads to go back to their staff and to ask them some of the questions you're asking about comfort level, concerns, what might be done. Obviously, you wouldn't be surprised to hear there's still some level of concern, there's still some question about vaccinations, et cetera. So I still have probably three or four department heads to talk to early tomorrow, and so we will make an announcement for staff. But at, at most, we would allow, but not require, some additional staff to potentially be on campus. We are not going to put our staff in a position of forcing them to do something they're not comfortable with right now. We'll have some different conversations as the vaccine becomes more readily available for all portions of our staff, but in all candor, even with the recent announcement from Johnson and Johnson, I think we're still looking at this summer.
Thank you, Brandon. You all have done, oh, go ahead, Martha.
And I'll, I'll just add, and where Brandon is really effective is recognizing our staffs do not all work the same, and so he's really approaching that on a very tailored, individualized approach with each of our departments.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that, and you all have done an incredible job of making sure that our staff is safe and healthy, and you take their, their needs into consideration and their comfort level, and I really appreciate that, and I think that's why we've, we've been a safe community, too. And by the, you know, safe community of Morrisville, but I mean, even within the organization itself, you've kept everyone safe, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Mayor Pro Tem speaks for all of us on those comments. We appreciate that. Assistant Managers, Zudima, do you have the direction you need in regards to March meetings?
Yes, sir. We will keep all three of the scheduled council meetings all virtual. The PZB meeting will be all virtual. We'll continue to allow public comment, and I'd have to look at the agenda. If we have public hearings, we'll accept public hearing comments in the same way we have over the past four or five weeks through email.
Okay. Excellent. Does staff have anything else before we go to final council comments before we adjourn?
No, sir. Thank you.
Town Manager? Okay. At this time, I'd like to recognize, essentially in the opposite order of how we usually do council comments, so for our final wrap-up comments, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Caramella to start this off, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I think I thoroughly enjoyed our discussion, and a lot of good points that we have done, especially sidewalk prioritization, and, you know, the bond referendum was really intense that I didn't even feel yesterday, you know, it went in a heartbeat like that. So, yeah, I really enjoyed, and the UDO amendments, obviously, you know, the staff has a lot of work on their side, and I wish what we gave them input is good for them to continue the work. But thanks to all the staff and for, you know, spending your time with us, and also to Martha for the goodie bag. I wish we had every day each new ones, but I'll take it what I got. But nevertheless, thanks, and it was a good conversation.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Oh, my goodness. I would like to thank Town Manager Page and Assistant Town Manager Zudima for a spectacular event. It's hard to pull these together, it's, it's hard to manage all of the different viewpoints, you know, during the discussion for sure, but I thought it was very well-run, and we kept our, you know, eye on the clock so that we could provide as many topics as we could. My favorite topics, of course, were affordable housing and the bond, and talking about UDO amendments. It's very interesting to me to see how common my view is with some topics, and then uncommon on other topics. So sometimes I had an aha moment where I didn't think somebody thought the same way or had the same opinion, and they did. So it's, it's a mixed bag, and it's good because we have seven people, and we all should not agree. We, we have to have thoughtful, productive discussions to kind of stretch ideas and our suggestions, and I think that we were very respectful, and we tried to think about the town first and how we would get to achieve our goal. So I really appreciated that engagement, and the goodie bag was sufficient for me, Mr. Councilmember Caramella, very thoughtful, and it was a rather nice surprise. So I'd also like to thank members of the public that watched the retreat, at least in part, because this can be very detailed and specific, and it's how we're working towards building our future together, and I appreciate your attention to our dialogue. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rowe?
So I, uh... So I want to thank Mayor Colley for managing the substantive meeting along with Mayor Pro Tem and the council and the staff for just everything. Did all the goodie bags. And I think, I, this was a very successful retreat, in my opinion. It's been very evident to me over the last few days. First of all, I just want to thank each council member for sharing to this body and the town of Morrisville your tremendous depth of experience in all areas. And I think it bodes very well for our town that our collective strength together can make us a very, very, very formidable team. I think we can be the best in all categories, the kind of place to work in, the kind of place to live in, and the kind of place to play in. And I think we're already well on our way with a lot of the companies we're recruiting. So I think that the bond referendum, the discussion of affordable housing, the updates on tree preservation were very helpful. And I did wish there was more time for brainstorming. I did, I brought up the idea of history and tourism. I hope we can look at that. I, Mayor Pro Tem disagreed about me, about the Cultural Resources Division, but maybe I could be the cultural attache and, you know, help more facilitate that. But we, I think we need to focus on that and then technology and data. So I look forward to, you know, figuring out how the smart cities and steering committee can maybe provide our citizens and the public more data in the areas of schools and development. And, but I really want to thank everybody. This was a very successful retreat. I think we have a lot to be proud of and look forward to eventually seeing everyone. And a final thanks to the public for listening and being engaged and also to all of the engaged advisory committees who play such a pivotal role in our work on the council. Thank you and be safe.
Thank you. Councilmember Robody?
I also thought that this was a very successful retreat. I was really excited by the bond discussion. I just am amazed and humbled by the amount of good that we're going to be able to do for this town with the bond. I also would really like the brainstorming session. I hope that we can devote more, devote more time to Steve's idea, ideas around the arts council and to my idea around small business support. And I'm really glad that we, it was nice to hear the whole council, like, talking about trees and preservation and the environment. I'm really glad that we're all, we all seem to be on the same page there because I think that we can really do a lot of good going forward and I'm excited to move forward with this team. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I'll echo what the others have said. I do want to thank the staff especially for all the work that went into preparing the presentation and putting everything together. I know it had to probably taken hours to get all that information together and get it ready for us. So I appreciate all that work that you guys do. And then also want to thank the council, my fellow council members in coming together in the tree preservation discussion. I just, I think this is a topic near and dear to my heart, similar to affordable housing, to Councilmember Scroggins, Johnson. So I was, I really enjoyed that discussion of the tree preservation and it seemed like, you know, all of us were in unity with that topic. So I miss you guys, wish we could be meeting in person and I hope everyone has a good rest of your Sunday.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, please.
So I'm going to echo what everybody has already said. This was a very successful virtual retreat and huge kudos and thanks to our staff. And Donna's right, all the time and effort that went into this, I'm not sure we'll ever really understand because the idea that it was virtually added a whole different level of stress to that process. So thank our staff and obviously thank each and every one of you. I love this galley view or whatever this view is called. I think it was Jeannie, Jeannie that told me about it a couple of meetings ago. I didn't know this existed. I love it, so I can see everybody's face. So that's how, that's the mode I used through the whole weekend and it really helped me too, Vicky. So, okay, good. That's a good background. Anyhow, so thank you all very much. I also want to say thank you all for being so honest and vulnerable. I really appreciate that. I really, as Vicky said, I really appreciate the fact that we are all different. We all have different views and opinions and ideas, and we should. We live in a community that is incredibly diverse. And I don't just mean diverse culturally, but I mean diverse in their opinions, their needs, their wants, their desires. And it is really important that we reflect all of that. So I thank you for your patience with me because I oftentimes will bring up a viewpoint that I think has not been introduced into our discussions that I think should be because of the diverse views, opinions, needs, and wants that are out there in the community. So thank you for letting me do that. You are all very kind to me and very respectful to me when I bring up very different viewpoints. And again, I do that for a reason because I think it brings, it brings really important discussions or really important items into our discussion that sometimes shift and make for a better solution in the end. And I think we all do that. I'm not the only one that does that. I think we all do that to a degree. And I think we come up with a better solution in the end when we have all these different opinions and viewpoints incorporated in our discussions. So thank you all very much and I hope you enjoy the rest of your limited part of the weekend. So, thank you.
Indeed, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So I'd like to add my sincere thanks to my colleagues for sharing their time, energy, and passion for service to the town this past weekend. Your dedication and preparation is obvious from the meaningful contributions and valuable perspectives shared during our discussions. Thank you to our dedicated staff who each and every day are seeking ways to improve our lives and keep us safe. To our residents, you are our reason for being here. Thank you for entrusting us with the decisions to both preserve and make the investments necessary to enhance your quality of life. Enjoy the rest of the day and see you soon, perhaps at our next meeting, which is Tuesday, March 9th at 6:00 p.m. That will be held virtually. At this time, I would now entertain a motion to adjourn. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robody, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Ral, please.
I wholeheartedly and absolutely accept that motion.
Or second it.
Hey, yeah, second it.
I don't know, I came up with that, it felt good.
Town Clerk Smith, will you please conduct a roll call vote on the motion to adjourn our first annual virtual retreat?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Scroggins, Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robody?
Aye.
Councilmember Ral?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adjourn passes unanimously.
It is 12:34. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Take care, everyone.